Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the committee, the whole for January 24th. And welcome to the we are convened here on the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Councilor Anderson in the chair. Please be advised that this council meeting is being live streamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view in the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. I wonder if I can then have him motion to adopt the present agenda before us. Councilor French moves, Mayor Hereford seconds. Any opposed? Thank you. As for delegations and invited presentations, first up is a presentation from the Sea to Sky, RCMP detachment, Inspector Robert Dijkstra and Staff Sergeant Garth Bradley with us on the topic of the Sea to Sky Critical Incidents and Community Response. Please go ahead, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Perfect, thank you. I have a prepared statement that I'll read, and then we can have some questions after that, if that works. So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in response to the submission to council late last year by Rising Tide Squamish. As the officer in charge of the Sea to Sky RCMP, I want to reaffirm our commitment to providing effective and compassionate policing services that reflect the values and expectations of our community here in Squamish. Regarding protest activities, our primary objective is to maintain public safety while respecting the fundamental rights of individuals to engage in lawful and peaceful protest. As the local police service of jurisdiction, we prioritize proactive engagement and relationship building. To that end, we have four officers in Squamish who have completed specialized training as part of the police liaison team. This training focuses on fostering communication, trust, and understanding between law enforcement and protest groups. Specifically, it equips officers with skills in negotiation, de-escalation, and community engagement, ensuring that dialogue remains open and respectful. These officers are our local resources. They're trained to work directly with community members and protest groups to promote peaceful outcomes. It's important to clarify the role of the British Columbia Critical Response Unit, or Crew BC, and the circumstances under which it might be called upon. Crew BC is a specialized provincial resource that can provide additional support in situations where the scale, complexity, or risk level exceeds the capacity of the local police. While our approach is to manage public order locally whenever possible, there may be instances where additional resources are required to ensure public safety. Should Crew BC be deployed in Squamish, it's important that you recognize and be aware that our role as the police service of jurisdiction remains central. We would work closely with Crew BC to provide local context, ensure alignment with community expectations, and facilitate an appropriate and balanced response. However, I want to again emphasize that the relationship building and frontline engagement with the community and any protest groups will continue to be led by our local officers. We recognize the importance of maintaining trust, open lines of communication, and a policing approach that reflects the values of Squamish residents. In an era where reconciliation with indigenous communities is a national priority, we recognize that protests may arise over a wide range of issues, including those that impact local First Nations communities. Our policing philosophy places a strong emphasis on respect, dialogue, collaboration, and understanding, ensuring that when protests interact, or rather intersect with First Nations interests, we respond in a manner that is mindful of reconciliation goals and respectful of all parties involved. This is not just a principle, but a practice that guides our interactions with all community members. We are committed to working in partnership with indigenous leaders and communities to ensure that public safety efforts are respectful and supportive of reconciliation goals. To summarize, our policing approach is guided by core values of compassion, fairness, and public trust. We prioritize communication and negotiation, aiming to create a safe environment where lawful and peaceful protests can occur. When public safety is at risk, we will act decisively, always within the framework of the law and with the goal of protecting everyone involved. While we cannot predict every scenario, we are confident in our local team's ability to manage situations effectively and in line with the expectations of the community. I hope this statement provides some clarity on our approach and our commitment to serving the community with integrity. I thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions that you have in relation to this matter.
Thank you, Inspector Dijkstra. Any questions from council?
Yeah, thank you for that. I was curious just the mechanics of this. Who makes the call as to what resources get sent in to help? I'm thinking of a scenario where a little bit of help would be great, and so maybe it's a response versus an over, you know, an over-response. And just how does that work? And I'm assuming this question stands with any matter of situations. How much control do you have over when you ask for help, what that looks like? Do you ask for that specific help to come, or you say, "We need resources," and then a decision is made elsewhere as to what those resources end up being that you receive?
Yeah, thank you for that. In most cases, we have a direct say in what resources we get to assist us in whatever situation is ongoing. There are certain units, like the Integrated ERT team, where when we call the team in, there's a minimum package or a minimum number of people that they would send for a particular incident. But in the past, we've also noted that we felt that there was a really minimal need. We still were able to negotiate low. So normally, a full package and an ERT team, for example, is something like thirty-some-odd people. That's kind of the standard response to ensure that they can do all of the negotiation, all of the proper policing techniques that are required in any particular event that could happen, basically covering all the possibilities. We had an incident last year where we managed to get three ERT people to come. So there is some flexibility. As it pertains to protests, obviously, they can be dynamic in nature. So, you know, we start off with our local resources. We feel that the protest is going to be a bigger event than we would call in additional resources to assist based on what we think the need is. Crew BC and other units will probably have their own minimums in some cases for what they require based on the ask, but we do get a fair amount of say in terms of what comes. We don't just say, "We need Crew BC," or "We need ERT," or "We need another team," and then suddenly there's a hundred, you know, two hundred officers just walking in the streets. There's a degree of flexibility there based on the need.
And follow-up if I can? So, thank you for that. That's helpful. And then, in your statement, I believe, I just want to make sure that I have this. You, local command still stays in place when additional resources arrive? I'm just trying to understand the continuity of the context and the relationships that I know you folks have in the community.
Yeah, the larger that an incident becomes, there's a much bigger command structure that starts to get engaged. So while we wouldn't necessarily be responsible for directing Crew directly, they would have their own managers and their own people. The command team that would involve providing overall directions would start with us. We'd be part of that team, and we would set the tone for how things happen.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair. And can you just clarify how costs would be allocated if a provincial unit were to come into play? And so is that because it's a provincial unit, it's paid for entirely by the province, or does that get billed back to the municipality?
No, my understanding, if we were to call in Crew BC, it's a provincial team that's there to assist us in the event that we need the additional resources. So there would be no costing back. Crew is covered by the province. That would be their costs and responsibility. Nothing comes back to the municipality.
Counselor Greenlaw.
Thanks through the chair. I was just wondering, under what circumstances would you foresee the crew being employed in Squamish?
Again, it really comes down to the type of situation that we would be dealing with. We do have a relatively good team here in Squamish, but there's only so much we can do with the resources that we do have. Because of the joint command that we have within the Sea to Sky as well, I'm able to deploy resources from Whistler, Pemberton, to come down and assist, so we can draw on additional bodies to assist in the event that there's something going on. Crew, for me, is if we see an event that's starting to either be planned, which is outside of the scope of what our local resources could potentially cover, or if we have an event that's ongoing and it starts to go in a direction which is outside of our scope to be able to manage on our own, we would bring in additional resources, and that's when we would call them in. Ideally, it's nice to be proactive, but hopefully in being proactive, we don't, events don't get into major situations in the first place.
I guess what I'm asking for specifically is, what do you mean by events? You've mentioned protests quite a few times. Are you specifically talking about protests, and is that how you foresee CRU being employed in Squamish?
For me, it'd be in the event of protests, correct? And the crew has a bit of a mandate. They do have extra bodies. Sometimes they can provide assistance in other things, but for me, it's directly related to process activity.
And then my understanding was the direction of CRU is shifting in that it would be employed for kind of natural emergencies, like natural hazard emergencies. Is that inaccurate?
To be honest with you, the mandate does, it has shifted. I think it can be in relation to pretty much anything that's protest-related. It doesn't have to necessarily be related to natural, although that's part of the mandate.
Well, I meant more like climate change disasters and something happening, you know, like an atmospheric river or something where we need help, or, you know, a landslide on our highway kind of thing.
Yeah, I think so. I think they're able to be deployed for those types of things as well.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, so just to be clear, the request for the employment of CRU would come from, like specifically, the RCMP in Squamish? That's who the request would be from? It wouldn't be from an external group?
No, it would come directly from myself or whoever's acting in my role at the time.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions, council? Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know, with Crew being a relatively new body and having been through a few incidences around the province, is there a debrief program? Are learnings from specific incidents taken into future incidences employing best practices?
I'm not fully aware of exactly how it is that Curb became Crew. Obviously, I think part of it was due to previous incidents that had happened, and there's some learning that took place as a result of that. I would assume that obviously the new team has taken in lessons learned from previous activities and employed that as part of their practices now.
Good, thanks, Chair. Counselor Peddingle.
Yeah, thanks. Is Crew sort of the only unit or team that deals with this sort of thing? Or are they sort of one of a couple of possible sort of groups that might respond in sort of a protest or natural disaster-type circumstance?
That's a good question. I'm not 100% sure. I think they're probably the primary team that would assist us if we needed. Again, we do have other teams like the Integrated ERT team if it was a more serious incident. There's teams of crisis negotiators, there's a whole lot of different options that are available to us, but I think in an incident like this, like we're talking about, that would be, Crew would be the primary assistance body over and above local resources.
Okay, and then at this point, do you know our Crew members sort of seconded solely to that team, or are they, they have sort of other duties and they're called on to Crew when there's a need?
That is a good question. Gareth, do you know the answer to that one?
There's a certain level of staffing, yeah, and that's their primary role. And then they have seconded members that can be pulled in provincially according to MOs.
Further questions, council? Any comments to offer? We do have time in case anybody... Then, oh, Mayor Hereford.
I'll just move receipt of the report, and that'll give us...
And do I have secondaire for Mayor? Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Stoner? Further discussion? Mayor Hereford?
Just like to thank both the community for bringing the concern forward and you folks for coming and speaking with us. I know this is a challenging subject that comes with some history and combined with some, we've heard some structural changes and so on, but also a bunch of, some hypotheticals, which are also challenging to operate in. So I hope that there's some good pieces of this conversation for me, and I did some learning, and I hope this is as far as we need to go with this conversation, this topic, as we, as our community moves forward together. So, but really, thank you for coming, having a conversation with us today.
Counselor Stoner, did I see your hand? Oh, very good. And then Counselor Peddingle?
Yeah, I think this is, I do find it to be a challenging topic. I, you know, I personally, organizationally, haven't seen the RCMP. I, my perspective, respond adequately to some of the criticisms, I think quite valid and well-documented events, and raises a lot of concerns for me. And I, you know, when we made the motion to hear more, it was important to me that we, and I appreciate you coming to speak, but that we not expect the local RCMP to speak on behalf of CRU, because I think, you know, for any large organization, there's different perspectives and different actions, and I think we have seen, from my perspective, really strong community relationship and, you know, good work from the IFNU team and so on. And so wanted to try and separate what we see with the local detachment and operations versus what I would still consider some more troubling aspects in how things have been approached and, for me, would like to see a little more accountability and action from the RCMP to feel comfortable with CRU. And so maybe this is something, from my perspective, for more future discussion, but want to separate out again, my appreciation for the efforts that I've seen folks here on the ground and the team we have here in Squamish to work with the community, which I do really appreciate, and for me, doesn't reflect what I've seen in the Wet苏and territories and some of the other, Fairy Creek and other things. So just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I too am thankful for your presentation today and how quickly you've been able to accommodate us. When we passed the motion asking for this presentation, I had it in my head that it would be nine or 10 months before you were able to fit us in. You clearly went out of your way to make sure you could get back to us quickly, and I appreciate that. So there are a few things that I heard today that I think are really encouraging, words like relationship building, communication, negotiation. These are super important in situations like a protest, because for everybody involved, it is a very difficult environment. And I think particularly for RCMP or anybody that has been charged with keeping the peace, super challenging in an environment where peace is not necessarily top of mind for some of the people who are involved in the protest action. So I speak in favor of receiving the motion. Thanks for coming.
Counselor Hamilton, did I see your hand earlier? Gentlemen, I believe this has been, oh, excuse me, let's, please, Counselor Greenlaw.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thanks for coming in and talking to us today. This is a sensitive topic for some obvious reasons. I was speaking to some of the land defenders of the Wet苏and a few months ago, and their encounters with CIRG, and which is now Crew, my understanding, are quite disconcerting. A lot of violence and aggression on behalf of the RCMP towards these people. So, and I've made this comment before, and I will make it again, I do have an expectation that our RCMP, our local force, and our provincial force too, for that matter, will be, you know, protecting the rights of individuals over industry assets and corporate rights. I'm very uncomfortable with the CRU being in our district, and I think that people all over the world are being put in a really difficult situation where governments and legislation are not representing the best interests of people and being enacted with climate change, and they feel like there are no choices, or being, or worse, representing corporate interests as opposed to human interests. And it's my understanding that the CRU has been employed in similar ways, so I, you know, I have a lot of respect for our local RCMP unit, and I just, yeah, there's a lot of trust happening right now in this decision, because I do have a lot of fear about the CRU, and I think a lot of people do too. And, yeah, and I do think that people need to be heard more than corporations right now. So thanks for listening to that.
I think this has been a very helpful discussion. The explanation of the respective roles between the Sea to Sky detachment and Crew BC, and the experience that's available to be deployed. Inspector Daisgra, I noted your emphasis in your first remarks on local resources, and I think that this is important, and I'm sure that we all appreciate your emphasis on this. I trust, then, that your information can satisfy, give counsel, give confidence and comfort to not only council but the general public, and thank you very much. I'll call the question, then, that we received this report. Counselor Stoner moves. Counselor Hamilton, second. Oh, excuse me, I'm calling the question. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, next up, we have a presentation from staff on the draft housing agreement template for affordable homeownership provided by a nonprofit housing provider. We have before us Mr. Valeniskas, Director of Community Development, and Jesse Abraham, Planner. Please proceed. Thank you.
Good morning, council. I will pass it over to Jesse Abraham to do the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
There we go. Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Committee. My name is Jesse Abraham, Planning Consultant, presenting on behalf of the Community Development Department. I am presenting the draft housing agreement template for affordable homeownership by nonprofit housing providers for committee feedback. The district secures non-market housing units through housing agreements and has previously reviewed and approved housing agreement templates for developer-owned and publicly-owned rental units. Over the course of 2024, staff identified a gap in the perpetually affordable housing policy that there are no criteria in which to assess and secure affordable homeownership units, a concept that has been raised by several developers and nonprofit organizations. This policy gap was raised by district staff specifically in working with DWIFT Housing Society, a new nonprofit society with a mission to deliver new affordable homeownership opportunities. In order for the nonprofits to use the zoning bylaw provisions for affordable housing, such as increased allowable density, a draft criteria is required. As such, staff have drafted an agreement that will align affordability criteria in perpetuity with the district's perpetually affordable housing policy. For clarity, no specific project has been proposed for this agreement. The purpose of a housing agreement template is to maintain consistency across all housing agreements, deliver units in alignment with the district's PAH policy, and to clearly outline expectations for both the district and the housing entity. In future, project-specific housing agreements will be brought forward to council in the form of a bylaw. So the following slides review the standardized terms in the housing agreement template. Purchasers must be employed or self-employed for an average of at least 20 hours per week on an annual basis by a Squamish business or a retiree from work or unable to work due to disability and lived or worked in the district previously. So this criteria is consistent with the standardized terms of the non-market rental housing agreements that have been secured since 2018. In addition, purchasers must not possess residential real estate assets, including separately or jointly with a spouse or common-law partner. This criteria is included in the PH policy and is a reasonable requirement for non-market homeownership units. Purchasers must meet the established income limits. So the limits are based on a proportion of BC Housing's definition of middle-income limits, which are updated annually and shown on the slide here. So starting at $105,000 annually for a studio and up to $191,000 annually for a three-bedroom unit. The income limits are proposed as a sliding scale for different unit types to ensure diversity of income levels. The proposed limits must also consider the qualifying purchase threshold once sale prices are determined. So the original sale price is the cost of development of that unit based on a detailed pro forma prepared by quantity surveyor. So the first sale prices are intended to achieve cost recovery for the project. The resale maximum price is the resale value which is established based on the increase in the MLS home price index. So where the change in MLS home price index is negative or cannot be determined, the maximum price shall be the most recent sale price. By restricting resale values, the units will become more affordable over time. In terms of renovations, future owners may increase sale price by the cost of the renovation with invoices and proof of upgrades and with an approved building permit, up to a maximum of 75% of appraised market value of the unit. So the purpose of this term is to allow owners to recover costs for improvements and upgrades while maintaining below-market prices. Primary residence, so the use of every unit is for owner occupancy as a primary residence and not intended to be rented out. Rentals are only permitted if the unit is sold to and owned by an eligible nonprofit housing provider. This term allows nonprofits to purchase units at a below-market rate and to be offered to community members at below-market rent rates. Rent rates will be established by the provider and approved by the district. Lastly, there is a term on the housing agreement that states that the district has the authority to assign an entity or select purchasers if they so choose. This term is included in the non-market rental agreements as well. Next steps include collecting committee feedback from the meeting today and revising the housing agreement template if required. The template may be used by nonprofit housing providers as a tool to negotiate new affordable homeownership projects. And once a permit application has been submitted to the district, a housing agreement bylaw will be presented to council for readings and adoption and then registered on title. Staff recommends that the committee receive the draft housing agreement template for information and direct staff to incorporate feedback as discussed. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair. Thanks for the presentation, for being here, Ms. Abraham, but I think my question is to Mr. Valeniskas. The perpetually affordable housing policy has been in place since 2018. We've talked about updating it for a number- We've talked about updating it for a number of years, given that we've had a few examples recently of trying to apply it. But we haven't actually updated the perpetual affordable housing policy with our lessons learned. So I'm just curious why this policy is coming to us in advance of updating the PH component for rental.
The Chair, that is absolutely correct. The policy, our perpetual affordable housing policy needs to be updated. It's, we've been limping along with this policy and kind of looking for general compliance at this point. And we are currently looking at our work plan and seeing where we can fit it in, 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 in the near future. So this might be coming back to council for discussion this year. But essentially, we, we don't recommend pausing other work related to affordable housing until that policy is done. We are developing, one of the things that we're doing as part of the CMHC grant funding is we're going to be developing our own housing needs report, which will be very helpful in then informing the perpetually affordable housing policy as well. And that's, that project is happening this year.
I appreciate that perspective. The challenge that I have is that this is based on that policy. So some of the things like how we've set rents according to bedrooms as opposed to necessarily targeted towards rents or income specifically. And so there are some decisions that we made in the PH policy that I think we are now being challenged with. And so how are we taking those lessons forward into this one, or are we just replicating that error here? Without having had that conversation amongst council and staff. So tying things to employment specifically around bedroom units. Like those are big conversations that we've had challenges with the perpetual affordable housing policy that we haven't really wrestled with, but that same structure is being applied here.
I think through the Chair, the, my answer will be the same in that, yes, it's not perfect and we have to limp along and it informs other policies. This isn't a policy, this is a template. And I expect that once we go through the perpetual affordable housing policy update, we'll likely be updating our templates.
Okay, and then one follow-up question on the details. The initial sale price is based on the cost of development, but there's no definition on what's allowed to be included in that cost. Is that something that we've considered? So what level of value engineering? Like, what are the actual defined costs of development? And is that something that we should be including in the bylaw?
Through the Chair, thank you. Good question. So the original maximum price does consider that a nonprofit housing provider is not budgeting for a developer markup, which can take 15 to 20% of the development cost. Land could potentially be purchased at below-market value, as well as nonprofits have access to low-cost financing. So there's no, currently the housing agreement does not include any restrictions on what the original maximum price must or must not include.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Counselor Anderson. On page 19 of Diamond, we find the owner's statutory declaration. And I want to be certain I understand what information could potentially go into some of those blank spaces because I found myself scratching my head. Not too sure what was being sought. So what are some examples of words that would be used in the third line? This is the one that starts with "in my capacity as."
Yes, thank you for that question. The statutory declaration is a standard form that is also included in those other housing agreements for rental units as well. And so perhaps this one needs to be revised as it's just the owner that needs to fill out the statutory declaration.
Okay. Doesn't, doesn't quite answer my question. So one possibility for that line could be "in my capacity as owner"?
It could be a representative of the owner or the owner. But Ms. Abraham is correct, this statute of declaration is geared towards a rental unit, so that certainly needs to be updated.
Okay. Kind of makes my next few questions, I'll ask anyway. So would the, the next line be the address of the housing unit?
That's correct. The next line would be the address.
Okay, and then the final line of the statutory declaration, bottom right-hand corner, there's, there's nothing to describe what's supposed to go there. I'm guessing that would be the date of signing, is that correct?
Correct, that would be the date of signing.
Thanks, Chair.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much, and thanks very much for bringing this. I think that affordable homeownership is a, is an important piece, the affordable housing mix in Squamish. I think in the long run, it's a, it's an excellent way to have people afford living in our community long-term, in a secure way, long-term. Having said that, I have some concerns about this proposed policy. And to give you, to, to put it to perspective, some of my concerns. When I look at a policy like this, I try to think of how could, how could this policy be used in a, in a, in a way for a company or an organization to generate profit through their nonprofit arm? So a for-profit company generating a not-for-profit arm and using the not-for-profit arm and the benefits that Ms. Abraham has detailed for not-for-profits to extract profit. So in that, my, I think a core question for me is in the first part. In the first part of the staff report, we say this is open to any not-for-profit provider. Has Housing Squamish been consulted on this? And is there, why would we not limit this opportunity to Housing Squamish? Who is our not-for-profit housing provider in an official way?
Through the Chair, we do have other housing providers in the community as well. It is expected that given the restriction on sale price and the intent of this agreement that it only, it applies to 100% affordable housing developments that have to be discounted by 25% of the market price. And that 25% would be a very generous profit margin for a developer to, to realize. Banks normally require 15%, that's the kind of minimum profit range. So yes, there could be a scenario where a developer sets up a nonprofit arm and tries to develop under this agreement. The end result would be the same, the affordable units have to be sold at a certain price range and then have to be resold in accordance with the agreement. So it's, staff were looking at it as an opportunity to go wider than just a not-for-profit housing providers.
Counselor Stoner, follow up on this.
Sorry, can you just clarify the requirement for a 25% discounted rate? I didn't see that anywhere in the report. It's sale at cost. And then?
Through the Chair, so the target would be 25% below average market value or sale price based on the items that we listed earlier, which is no developer markup, potentially lower land values and access to lower-cost financing.
If we could add one more aspect that Ms. Abraham brought up is that the definition of housing provider also includes, has to be approved by the district. So there is some discretion for the district to, when we're entering into agreement, to make sure that it's legitimate.
Follow up, and then I have a few other, a couple of other questions if we have time. Yeah. So do we have a list of housing providers that we maintain?
Through the Chair, I don't know if we have a list. We are aware of all of the housing providers. There aren't many of them. There's a handful of housing providers in Squamish, but I don't think we are maintaining a list.
And do we have any criteria for what somebody might need to fulfill to become a housing provider?
In the public sector, we, we normally look for a non-for-profit organization, a society essentially that's set up. And this is what the agreement, this agreement is geared for, send love to our rental, which has the affordable, not-for-profit provider agreement and then developer affordable agreements.
So do I understand the response, your response correctly, that our criteria is that they are a not-for-profit organization?
That's correct.
Okay. So given that there's a significant reliance on the, our ability to manage or our ability to mitigate price increases to, like that's the way, it's the increase in the house value over time. That's the thing that we're, we're using to leverage, to ensure perpetually affordable housing. Yeah? It's not clear to me that this, the way that this policy is set, in the way that we're tying the increase in value to the increase in the house price index. It's not clear to me that that will achieve perpetually affordable housing. Because this affordable housing is going to increase at the same rate as our market, because that's what the HPI is. To give you an example, if we were to take the example from the staff report of a build that cost $560,000, let's imagine that got built in December 2020. At that point, the HPI was 261. And then that was sold in 2024, let's imagine, where the HPI was 352. That would result in a fractional increase, 352 minus 261, all divided by 261, multiplied by 256, of $755,000. So in four years, that property, that affordable property will have increased by $215,000. Is it the homeowner, it's the owner that then takes that capital gain, correct?
Through the Chair, correct. The initial owner would receive that capital. The intention is that if it started at a below-market rate, that over time, there would be some return on investment while still being below-market over time. I think that calculation that you presented as an example would have been a very large change in MLS home price index over a small amount of time.
That is the, like those are the actual numbers for Squamish. So this isn't, this isn't an arbitrary example. This is if somebody purchased in December 2020 and sold in October 2024. So I don't see, I'm struggling to understand how the, the way that we're tying to the housing price index is going to continue affordability. But I think that point is clear. My next question then is on the right of first refusal. I noticed that that section is empty. Could you, that, and to me, that's very important. Schedule D. What is intended there for the right of first refusal?
Through the Chair, the right of your first refusal is referenced in the terms of the housing agreement. Essentially, the district would have right of first refusal. And what that means is that they would be notified when there is a sale so that they could monitor resale price and value over time. An actual right of first, first refusal agreement would need to be drafted by a lawyer and attached to a future housing agreement by law.
Okay, so that right of first refusal would be in favor of the district, not in favor of the housing provider?
That is correct. So the district would have the right of first refusal as per the terms in the housing agreement.
Does the district have any mechanism upon which it can own and rent properties?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. That's it for now. Thank you.
Mayor Herbert.
Thank you. I have questions around this, the HPI mechanism as well. And I just, maybe the question if we back up a little bit further is, how did we land on that mechanism for, for this, for that resale, the resale piece? I'm sure there's lessons learned. I know there's a, there's justification to land here before I get into asking specific questions about it. But what other things were considered and how did we get here?
Through the Chair, thank you, and good question. So we did consider other metrics of increased price over time, such as the CPI index, which is based on consumer prices and is an indicator of inflation. However, after doing it some sample calculations, CPI would be very low over time. And the argument could be made that someone buying into homeownership units may want some return on investment, and MLS home price index was linked to real estate rather than consumer prices, which was more relatable for the housing units.
Thank you. I think, when I think about the perpetually affordable housing policy, it links the pricing of the units to income levels. And then as soon as we step into this, we get disconnected again. And I think that basic concept is challenging for me. We know that housing prices in Canada and, and other jurisdictions are disconnected from people's wages. And that concept is, is challenging to, to me, and I'd like to see that represented here and, and acknowledged in some way. Because we, I, I was wondering about the resale as I knew this was something that was, that was coming to us. I was curious about this resale piece and how we maintain that. And I understand that we want to have people participating in the, in homeownership is having stability and is investing, but it, and having, having some return is, is appropriate. But this one, I'm having a hard time with this, with this concept for some reason to Counselor Hamilton. But I find that quite, quite challenging. So I'm, anyways, that's just sort of a statement. I don't know if you can give me any comfort there, if there's anything explored that did connect it closer to, to income levels, sort of as it, in perpetuity, as to reflect the, the perpetually affordable housing policy, which we know has its challenges, but.
Through the Chair, certainly understand that this is a little different than, than what we normally used to seeing. The reason why we landed on the HPI is because this allows people to move on through the housing spectrum. So when it's not tied to the rest of the market, it's very difficult for people to, once they want to move to a different type of unit and perhaps buy something in the marketplace, all of a sudden their unit is disadvantaged in terms of the resale. So that was the, the purpose.
Okay, so then the, the starting point becomes very important as far as that price needs to be below market so that it remains below market as this, as it, as it increases. So we've had some examples in this room where with free land, some of the pro formas didn't work to achieve the dollar values that are, are there. So as it's written, do we have assurance that, that the markets, when the, when the units are delivered to, to market, that they will be, it's well, well below, because that's the crux of, that's the foundation of this, is that they need to start as low as possible so that they stay as low as possible going, going forward. So I'm just worried that that. As low as possible going, going forward. So I'm just worried that that. Cost number, which sounds appealing and that 15, 20% sounds appealing, but. We have seen examples where those numbers weren't, weren't possible on a, on a site. So. Is, is this possible? And do we have guarantees that these are truly going to come in at that well below market? So they stay that way going forward?
Through the chair, uh, no, we, we don't have any guarantees at this point. Um, we're not sure if it's feasible. We will need essentially, uh, because this is a new agreement, um, we will. Hopefully this will lead to an app, develop an application, uh, and through that process, we're gonna learn a lot, I'm sure. Um, and we'll probably need to adjust the agreement after that.
Yeah, because the eligibility criteria is again, sort of disconnected from the pre, from the price. But this, being affordable over time is all about the price. So I wonder if, how we resolve that, because if the, these come to mark, if these, if this policy leads to. These restrictions being put on something that's at market, it will forever be at market. With a strange how, with a strange caveat that doesn't actually have the impact that we're looking for. So. I'm really concerned about articulating. How we capture that. I don't know if that's captured in a formula. When, when we're looking at a template, we need to obviously look wider, but. Was that? Can, I, was a professionally affordable housing policy didn't dictate, is silent on purchase. So that's why there's no price here and it's just eligibility? Or are we assuming that the people that are eligible here are, are spending like a 30% or of their, of their income on? This purchase or like, how did we arrive at, at that?
Through the chairs. So the maximum in income limits do target middle income households, which is mentioned in the perpetually affordable housing policy. So similar to the rental agreements, we did tie eligibility um, to a, a common income limit. Um, and so these income limits are published by B C Housing annually. But you're correct, we did not tie the resale values to income limits.
I'm not too concerned about the resale values and the income limits. What I'm concerned about is that we've got these income limits on the units. And whereas we could be saying, as it's articulated here in my understanding, we could be saying, congratulations, you fit the, the bracket. You're now qualified to spend 50% of your income on the purchase of this unit. Like, there's no. How are we connecting their eligibility with their, the price of the, that they're eligible to purchase? To me, there's still a disconnect there unless there's, have we drawn that direct connection? I'm missing it.
Yeah. So through the chair, we actually included a term in the schedule that speaks to maximum income limits. Saying that the income limits could change at the district's discretion. And the purpose of that is that we don't know what people will qualify for. Because we don't know the original maximum price yet. But the intent is that um, a nonprofit would recover costs through the sales. Initial sales.
Okay, I got one more piece. I'm gonna mull that over for, for a second. I, um, but. Administering this going forward, how is that done? Is that? It, there seems to be a little bit extra here than, than normal. I don't think we're gonna see a ton of, of turnover, but is that to the? Does that fall to the, the strata or the not-for-profit or? Or is it to us to, to check audit these things as we, as we go? Through like right of first refusal at sale and, and so on. Like, is there a mechanism to collect some funds to administer this or? How does, how does that piece work? Or is that for the not-for-profits to figure out?
The way this first agreement was intended to be done is the, the housing society. Uh, or a society would do the first sale uh, with, in accordance with the housing agreement. And then subsequent sales would either go through the district and. The district could either develop a, um, an application fee uh, for review of each sale. To make sure that we're recovering costs, or we could enter into a service. Agreement with a housing provider such as the housing society. To provide that service for us. And again, um, that party could charge a fee for it.
Counselor Stoner, did you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, uh, I'm curious. Um, Jesse, you're well versed in this world. What outreach, if any, we've done to folks like Tofino who have recently gone through this process and actually weren't able. They had a really hard time filling their form or their for sale units because their. Income limits were lower than what they could actually afford to get a mortgage for, for what was coming up for sale. So what lessons have we done or outreach have we done to other organizations who have worked in this space in recent years?
Through the chair. Yeah, thank you. Good question. Um, so in the case of Tofino, their income limits were low to moderate income limits. Which are lower than the middle income limits that we're using for this agreement. So lesson learned in that case was that we did raise them a little bit. The trouble that Tofino had is that they didn't have enough. Interested purchasers who qualified for a mortgage. And so they ended up turning them into affordable rental units instead. So middle income limits have been used in this case, um, which are a little bit higher. And we also referred to Whistler Housing Authority Home Ownership Program. As well as Langford's Affordable Home Ownership Program. Um, in the case of Langford, they had a set percentage in terms of resale value. Which didn't seem appropriate for our case. And then Whistler Housing Authority, we refer to as well, which used um, CPI index. For resale value. Um, and what we learned in that case was that. It was very low um, over time and it was hard to move out of affordable homeownership units. Because there wasn't enough return on investment.
Um, and then, uh, can you point to anybody else who's using HPI? So I appreciate the challenge that gets created when you use CPI. One of the motivations though is to try and decommodify our housing stock. Um, so it does present some challenges. It also. Is pushing us in a bigger picture direction where we don't tie housing to the real estate market and the external forces. And we're really providing a stable home for people to live and call community home. And so are there others who are using HPI at this time, um, for what is potentially also subsidized if they're getting? Below market land, for example?
There were no other organizations that we referred to that use the HPI.
Counselor Peddingle.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, I did have some questions about criteria, but. Given some of the conversation with Counselor Stoner, maybe I'll hold those. But am I to understand that if we, or when we update our perpetually affordable housing policy? Those new criteria would apply during a, a sale. So if we change the income limits or employment conditions and so on, those would restrict a sale. Or are we sort of? Stuck with, you know, if you enter an agreement at this point in time, it's the, the sort of snapshot of where that policy is right now.
Through the chair, it's the housing agreement that would be adopted at occupancy, um, would be attached to that unit in perpetuity.
Okay, I, I think, yeah, that might be a reason why we, I, I know I might feel more comfortable addressing some of the. Concerns in, with the criteria now, or to find a way to be able to sort of assess. Based on current criteria when a home sale occurs. I, I guess one of the other things and, and maybe I misunderstood, uh, but in my mind, the thought was that this would allow for. A new not-for-profit to set up, have long-term operations. And I was going to ask. Is there a mechanism by which they can take, you know, like a land transfer tax in a way, like a 5% commission anytime there's a resale? And that would be a key revenue source to keep the not-for-profit going. But it sounds like this is more of a model where. The not-for-profit sort of does the initial build. There's enough of a, whatever, it makes sense, but. There's no expectation of long-term involvement of the not-for-profit in these homes. I mean, they may, but. Really, it may just fall to us. Is, is that? Like, what is our thought there?
So through the chair, that's correct. The um, non-for, not-for, not-for-profit would be involved in the initial sale. They wouldn't necessarily need to be involved in the resales, um, if they, unless there was some benefit in terms of fee for service. That they monitor eligibility long-term. Um, there is a term included in the housing agreement that allows the district to assign an entity to monitor these units long-term. Um, and so that's also lives in the rental housing agreements as well.
Just to, and the thought behind that was because um, you know, a not-for-profit could set up, build something and then. Long-term may not exist anymore. Um, so that's why it was set up so that it defaults back to the district. Or, you know, if a sale comes up and the not-for-profit is still in operation, the district could just say, could defer that sale back to the. Housing provider.
Is there anything in this that would preclude a not-for-profit that had an interest for whatever reason to stay sort of involved? Long-term and wanted to ensure sort of long-term operating revenue for them to sort of work into their agreements. You know, whatever percent commission on any time one of these resold, or, or is the sort of structure of what we're. Thinking about preclude that?
Uh, through the chair, I don't think the agreement precludes that. I think it would depend on the not-for-profit when we're entering into the agreement. Uh, in terms of their reputation and, you know, how long have they been around? And then when the, each sale comes up after that first sale, um, again, if the not-for-profit is. Still in existence and interested in continuing um, the resale, managing the resale process, I think that. Could work as well, um, in accordance with this agreement. Again, this is just a template. At this point, we're trying to feel out whether this is something that council could support if and when a development application comes forward.
Counselor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Um, I was just wondering if staff could comment on the flexibility of this template? Would it be kind of changeable with new applications? Or is it meant to be kind of the same every time as the name template would suggest?
Um, through the chair, I expect it's going to evolve uh, on a regular basis if it is something that. There is, you know, feasibility um, works out in, in, in the real world. So yes, I think as any of our templates, they're constantly being updated with the information that we have. And one of them will be the perpetual affordable housing policy update.
Okay, uh, because one of the things that I, and this could just be a total pipe dream of mine, but one of the things that I kind of see potentially happening is. People gifting existing properties to, you know, to this um, whatever separate pool of housing. So somebody like bequeathing a house to, to this um, this program. And I was wondering how that fits in, because obviously that's not a not-for-profit. And I do think there needs to be room for this to go beyond not-for-profits. To catch as many groups as we can to have houses in this pool. I see a very confused face behind you, but I'll find out later. So like, is there, is there flexibility in this town? Like, could, could we kind of incorporate that kind of idea?
Could you clarify the, the scenario?
Yeah, well, it's just like, there are a lot of people who live in town right now who have already realized massive profits in their houses. And they might be satisfied to say, I'm going to see a 400% profit by putting my house into this program. As opposed to a 900% profit. I don't know, I, like, I think, I think there are generous people out there. And just in the idea of, of, you know, having affordable housing for future generations secured. So I just, um. I, I just wonder about, you know, oddball options like that. And not being too limited in the way the template is right now. Obviously, we want to support not-for-profit organizations who want to do this work. But there may also be avenues of people who, who want to donate housing into this stock. And it won't be a financial burden to them.
Through the chair, I guess you could consider that as part of the original maximum price. You wouldn't have the value of land or you'd have a low. Lower than market value cost of land um, in the pro forma, which would bring down the initial sale price.
Okay, so there's some, like, that's doable. I don't know if it would ever happen, but I like to think about it. Yeah, I'm excited to see this work. So I'm, yeah, I, I think it's just a matter of figuring out. How we want to do it, because it is like the commodification of housing that is, that's what's gotten us into this problem. Anyways, amusing now.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. I just. Need to press on one of your comments, Mr. Valanescus, and that this is meant to be amended as we learn from it. That's what we said about the perpetual affordable housing policy that we drafted in 2018, that we know has challenges. And we haven't amended it or updated it. I've heard time and time again that our staff resources are limited, that our capacity within this organization and bringing things to council is limited. And so I am a little bit challenged that we would move this forward, knowing that is not. That is not fully baked, that it would need additional work when we have ongoing projects that are. Coming to fruition in, with, within a policy that is outdated. So can you just speak to the timing of this and why we would move it forward to bylaw? Um, there still seems to be a lot of questions, uh, if, and/or when the perpetual affordable housing policy update is going to come.
Thank you. Through the chair, excellent question. We are, um, we're planning right now, um, and, and looking at the strategic. Planning process that's going to unfold. And I think the perpetually affordable housing policy. Might come into play um, at that point. Um, this template. Is, is the first one for the district. Um, we've tried to work with a, 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 a housing society. That's interested in applying it. Um, but I expect that. By the time we actually get to a development application. My hope is that the perpetually affordable housing policy is either updated or being updated.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. So. Uh, another piece of, another concern of mine in the, in the uh, ability to potentially. Use or abuse this policy uh, in it with, with a for-profit mechanism. Is in the original max price. So the original max price defined, it says it's, needs to be defined by a quantity surveyor, right? Could you give me an idea of what sort of variability might appear in the, in the? Price set by different quality surveyors? I, there's gotta be variability. Do you have an idea of how much?
Through the chair, um. Quantity surveyors um, are, are kind of similar to, I think, um, appraisers. In that, yes, there is some variation. And normally what happens is if a. A private party submits uh, one to the district, um, and it doesn't look like it's in the ballpark. The district would um, ask for funding to do our own, essentially.
So. I'm, I have a little bit of concern in this. So, so I, I imagine, and I'm sort of guessing here by the limited. Amount of experience I've had around this table, that maybe a, like a 10 to 20% variation. In, in numbers from quantity surveyors might be reasonable, right? One might come out and another might be 10 or 20% higher or lower. Is that reasonable or is that way too big a number? I'm just trying to get a ballpark here, no concrete studies.
I unfortunately can't answer that question.
Okay, we'll leave that as my assumption, right? And so I, I'm trying to envision ways that the system could be abused and what we should do to the policy to prevent abuse. So I could imagine somebody coming forward, finding a friendly quantity surveyor, uh, somebody that we maybe, maybe we have confidence in that. Housing supplier. Maybe we believe that they are, you know, we, we. Our staff have a relationship with them, like have developed a relationship with them. And they have, we have confidence in them. Because that's, as you've said, is a big part of how we. Work, move forward in, in our trust, you know? So we develop a trust. And our quantity, and they find a friendly quantity surveyor that ends up. On the high side of our um, of the build prices. Generating a mechanism to build profit, build houses. Through their builder's arm. They have an arm which builds the houses. And generates profit through building affordable houses as opposed to selling affordable houses. Can you speak to, is there any mechanism you could think of? Can you speak to, is there any mechanism you could think of that could fortify or solidify or protect us against the fluctuations in the quantity surveyors?
Through the chair, I think that one of the thing that's becoming apparent, um, is that we need a specific percentage threshold that has to be below market, um, value in this agreement. Um, because the, our, our target when drafting this agreement was 75% of, of a market unit. Um, so we could just clarify that in the agreement. Um, that makes it a little bit more complicated for the provider because they have to get hit that threshold. And if it's a not-for-profit, there's no profit in it. You know, we might have to revisit an agreement, um, as the project goes through construction.
Further questions, counsel? Counselor Penningill.
So, so, and maybe this is my misunderstanding when I read through the maths. So the idea is, is that these appreciate with the market, it's just the starting point is lower and that's the only, I guess I, I had understood that we were somehow not totally removing this from the market growth, but, uh, somewhat, um, you know, you would see 50% of the market appreciation rather than 100% of the market appreciation year after year. But it is meant to be whatever the market does, that's how this will appreciate. It's just that the starting cost will keep it lower.
Through the chair, the intent is that it stays 75% below market, um, rates in perpetuity essentially. And you can find that in the improvement provision where it says that if there are, uh, capital improvements to the unit, they cannot be, they cannot exceed 75% of the resale market value.
But like, for example, if housing prices in Squamish went up by 20% sort of on average across the board, these units from whatever their starting point was, would go up the same amount, the same 20%. Um, we wouldn't say, well, no, it, there's, these ones can only go up half of the market, so 10%.
That's correct.
Counselor Greenlaw.
I was wondering if staff could comment on how, uh, where the 75% threshold has come from?
Through the chair, it's estimated that, um, true cost would be approximately 25% below market based on having no developer markup, um, lower cost of land potentially and access to lower cost financing, which equated to approximately 25% below market value.
Okay, yeah, so it's basically removing the profit margin for developers and then you build.
And the lower cost of finance.
Mayor Hurford.
Thank you. Um, have we done an analysis just as it sits here that given the target was 75%? Thank you for the comment that I, I agree, we need to have, uh, those targets in, in here, some incorporated somehow into this policy. But at 70%, 75% of market, um, is that supportable by the income qualification levels? And like, at what point, like, is that reasonable? Are those two things close together? Earlier in my comments, I was talking about how the income levels are, are, you know, the, the increase in, in real estate values are disconnected from those. But are we starting from a connected place if we hit, if we find a way to articulate that 75% of market value combined with the income levels that we're seeing here?
Um, through the chair, so the income levels are based on Squamish average incomes as well as the, or sale prices are based on Squamish, um, average sales. So that's the connection, but other than that, no, there isn't.
Yeah, I think that that's sort of the, that's exactly the challenge we're hearing from people in the community can't afford. So I don't know, I'm just wondering if this actually get, if that actually gets there or if given those income levels, there, there's still a requirement of, uh, someone to bring, um, a substantial, uh, amount of down payment to the table versus, versus, uh, like to get into this. I just want to make sure that we're getting this, this right. I, I like the overall concept, but at some point, these things need to be connected to, to, um, income. And I agree, so having some market forces there. I'm just want to make sure we're at least starting there. Um, because if we apply this formula, I could see a scenario potentially. I haven't run these, these, um, the numbers, but it might still require a substantial down payment that someone within those income brackets aren't going to get unless it's some other factor. So I, I'd like to understand that and have that incorporate, and, um, whether it's just a test case of what's, what's proposed, just to see what that looks like or, um, and I, I'm going to suggest that it's, it might be challenging to hit those numbers, to make all those numbers jive, jive from the opening move. And, um, yeah, that's what I'd like to, like to understand. So, um, okay, I'm trying to turn that into a question at the end to save myself, but I, it turns into just a comment. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, just wondering about the connection to our CAC policy. And by that, I mean, we, right now, if you bring forward market or non-market to some degree, there are considerations in evaluating your CAC contribution. And I'm wondering, are we trying to sort of hit an equivalent with this? Or, you know, might there be, depending on what level of discounting you do, there's different CAC offsetting like, I presume like someone isn't going to just do this and that's it. This is coming in consideration of waiving CACs or, or DCCs or something. So like, what, what's the other side of, of accepting this in these terms?
Uh, through the chair, these units wouldn't be, um, the, the template is not intended for CAC units. So it's, it's not for development that is building market, uh, units and is going to use the CAC policy to add affordable housing that's for sale. This is not, this is for providers that want to build 100% of the units under this agreement. Um, it would qualify for, um, not having to pay CACs, um, as affordable housing is exempt from paying CACs in our policy. And same would go, um, for development cost charges as well.
Right, so it is about, this is sort of in, in trade for waiving CACs and DCCs.
Correct.
Further questions at this time, counsel? Counselor Stoner.
Just to clarify, we'd waive DCCs as well?
Yes, I believe the DCC law exempts affordable housing from having to pay, um, DCCs.
Mayor Hurford.
And just on, on this point, th- this is to, um, if this policy was, was adopted, we don't, we'd apply that to, um, our policy of affordable housing being a, having its own, um, conditions around setbacks and, and, and heights and, and so on broadly across the community. Like, that's what we're trying to apply this, this to, which is D, DCC waves, like all that package of suite of benefits of building affordable housing.
That's correct. There's some flexibility in the zoning ballot that would then apply to these developments.
If there's no follow-up questions, we're on where we're at now in the discussion. Staff have requested a timeout. Ms. Glenn Day, we have a comfortable time. Would you say just five minutes or 10 minutes? What is your preference? 10 minutes? Then we will take a timeout at this time, uh, 10 minutes. Thank you very much. There anything to report from your internal consultations? Thank you.
Uh, no, nothing to report, uh, from our end. Thank you.
There any further questions from counsel at this time? Now then I'll ask staff before we proceed to the recommendation, whether you're clear at this point on the feedback you received and the councils posed from, or the questions posed from counsel.
We've got some questions and a little bit of feedback in that. Um, but if the council has more additional comments, we're, we're here to listen.
Counselor Stoner.
I'd like to propose an alternate recommendation to what's on the agenda if that's further there. Uh, so I'd like my council colleagues to consider that the draft housing agreement template for affordable homeownership be brought back for discussion, along with or after the perpetual affordable housing policy is updated or when a specific project enters into application. I will send that to you, Cheaton, in email format.
Is there a secondary for Counselor Stoner's motion? Counselor Hamilton, seconds. Any discussion? Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, I will speak to my motion on the floor. Uh, as I said, I do appreciate this coming forward and I do very much agree that affordable homeownership should be part of the affordability spectrum as a whole. Um, as I mentioned in some of my questions, we know that we are limited in capacity, both, um, time and staff resources. Um, and so the timing of this is just challenging for me. Like, there are still a lot of big questions here as we heard around the table today. Um, I in particular have questions or concerns around seeking clear definition for construction costs and eligible costs for, um, the initial sale price. Um, I feel quite uncomfortable linking it to the home price index and I'd rather see CPI or some combination thereof. I'm open to that discussion, but, um, entirely relying on HPI feels like it's a little bit out of step from what we're trying to do, especially if we are expecting that these projects come forward with some level of below-market land, um, that typically comes from the district or some other government agency. And so we are investing in that, um, to then link it directly to HPI feels challenging. So to me, there are some big questions, um, in this draft template. And so I think those are best addressed and wrestled with as we also take the lessons learned from our perpetual affordable housing policy, um, which also has some big questions in it, um, as we've learned, uh, some of the challenges as we've applied that to the rental units. Um, and I would like to be able to capture those lessons learned in this document going forward from the get-go, knowing that we still won't probably get it right from the beginning. Um, but, um, knowing where our capacity is limited, I would like to see us get our house in order with the rental housing units, um, and then learn from that going forward. Um, and given that in the staff report, it says that there is no specific project, uh, that is driving the timeline for this. I think that the motion presented, um, to either link it to the update for the perpetual affordable housing policy or in such time when an application does come forward, um, gives us the opportunity to still be flexible. Um, if, if there's something that, uh, if there's an opportunity that we want to try and get to. Um, so with that, I think I will stop talking. Thank you.
Counselor Greenlaw.
Um, thanks. I, I, well, I want to thank staff and, uh, for putting all this work together and presenting it. I, I do think that we need to move forward on, um, affordable housing homeownership. And, uh, I am And I am somewhat hesitant to support the motion on the floor. I do feel like personally I still have questions because if we're going to create something that is 25% below market value, I mean, that's already unaffordable, you know, and in two years it's going to be even even less successful, especially when you look at mortgage rates and stuff like this. So I I still have some concerns. I do feel like there's still some work and conversation that needs to go around this. My only concern with the motion on the floor, and I and I think Counselor Stoner has covered this is as Mr. Villaniss stated, we don't want to be putting any affordable housing pieces on hold. And I know that we have some eager participants, like the reason why we're talking about this today is is from groups actively wanting to bring homeownership to our community, affordable homeownership to our community. So with that in mind, I'm concerned that this motion will introduce time delays. That's coming.
Counselor Peggio.
Yeah, thanks. I will support the motion and just sort of some feedback on what I've heard. I think for me, the the goal is actually to decommodify housing for this sector. And I understand that means it will make it transit more difficult to transition into the market housing later, but you will have secure and safe and stable housing, which I think is the primary goal. I think there are some concerns I have around the conditions and criteria. So I do think we need a discussion around that and I would appreciate having it with the perpetually affordable housing policy, you know, ideally, like we can update those criteria as I understand it through rentals over time that we could do it for homeownership exchange. The other piece, you know, and as to my last question, it does strike me that there's maybe something or some models plural that maybe don't quite qualify for DCC being waived and ACCs being waived and all the other incentives we might provide, but are still something better than market. And so maybe there's some some middle ground for some of these things that that's useful and beneficial. It doesn't necessarily have to be all or nothing and could still do better than what we have. And so it's maybe worthwhile keeping an open mind to some things in between. Just sort of note, as I understand it, our rental, it's tied to income. And so getting to that decommodify thing, figuring out a way to get ownership more tied to income, I think is important. Thank you.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I am supporting the motion. Knowing that there are some very forward thinking people in our community who are looking at us to move this forward quickly. So they can move at the speed of business. However, what we do here at this table in this room is move slow, steady, thoughtful and mindful. And I and I think that's what this is doing is ensuring that what we're landing on is best practice and correct for what we need when we're ready to go forward. Having said all that, though, I for sure don't want us to get stuck at the start line and paralyzed by analysis. And I don't think we're going in that direction. Yeah. So with that, I support the motion.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'll also be supporting the motion on the floor. In my mind, a piece, a principle or a conceptual piece that appears to be misaligned is an expectation of ROI. When a community member receives the benefit of a of community support, and by that I mean this is alleviating removing CACs, having lower interest financing, having lower land purchases, all of those advantages come with a lower expectation of a return on investment. Because those are community, community pool resources that are going into allowing them, enabling them to purchase that. So I think it's from a principled perspective. The piece where I'm not as aligned is the expectation that the owner has a return on investment. More specifically on the housing agreement itself, I do think it's important that this fits into our perpetually affordable housing policy. And I think that this motion achieves that because we will be looking at the perpetual affordable housing policy in the context within the con- we will be looking at this housing agreement within the fuller context of our perpetual affordable housing policy. Specifically to this policy, my concerns are, or this suggested template housing agreement, my concerns are. Number one, I think it's important that we have some list of a defined list of not-for-profit housing societies societies in our community and a clear set of criteria for them to be on that list. Number two, I think we need a more robust mechanism to define the initial price of the unit to remove the possibility of this mech- this system being used for builders to generate business and profit. They have the right to do that, but not on on the communities, not on community funding. Third is a revised mechanism to calculate the maximum sale price that is that does not assume an expectation of return on investment and is not tied to the market because I don't see how tying to the market will generate perpetually affordable housing. Fourth is clarity that the right of first refusal is in the favor of the district and not in favor of the affordable housing supplier. And five, that the rental rates are aligned with rates defined in our perpetually affordable housing policy, which of course requires a perpetual affordable housing policy update. Thanks.
Mayor Hereford.
Thank you. I'm torn on this one. I agree what we have before us isn't. Listening to the feedback around the table needs more work. I think every time we touch an affordable housing piece of policy that sort of needs to be supported by the perpetually affordable housing work and others. We are taking, we learn ways we need, things we need to consider while we do that perpetually affordable housing policy review. So I think these things are actually connected. My preference would be that we provide feedback and have this come back. And at that time is a decision point where where are we? Are we comfortable enough? Does it then need to stay till it's at the perpetually affordable housing policy work happen? I'm hearing the discussion around the table and where we're where everyone's leaning here, but I think and I generally agree. I just don't know that this is exactly the step where we do that because the the motion as as written, if this comes back with a with a proponent, all of a sudden the proponent really needs to weather the storm of us flushing out these things and setting what those minimum expectations are before we consider it. So I'm going to provide some feedback and pieces I'd like to see, but I'm not going to support the motion, the motion for that for that reason. And that isn't, but that vote against this course of action isn't a blanket support for the for the template as presented. I just want to be clear on that. So for me, the understanding, the linking that the initial pricing. So under the structure that's proposed, we really need to link to articulate what that initial pricing is in relation to market and what that means to income. We need some extra work down there to make sure this is something that folks with those income levels can actually achieve without a without an unreasonable down payment. And I think the, which I know is, you know, specific to the individual and so on, and it's complicated, but we should have some rough understanding there. I think the the participation in the market is in is important, but the market itself is also one of the challenges. So I think there is somewhere between CPI and HPI that we can work with. I heard one of my colleagues mention a percentage of HPI on resale or something like, something like that, so that these do get more affordable over over time. And that would also hedge against if the starting point of these ends up being market because that's just hard to build. It's expensive place and it might just be hard to build these below market on that initial piece. So if there's a percentage of HPI, then it gets increased. So 50%, say just to use a big number, then they get affordable over time if you don't hit that number from the onset. So I think there's some work, more work to be done in that sort of space. And and the, I think the other piece that's interesting is that when we wrote the policy around the affordable housing, having enjoying some specific benefits throughout the community, we were thinking about rental when we did, when we did that. And that's where we, we had the not-for-profit. I'm less concerned element being a requirement. To me, I'm less concerned about that here if we hit the targets. Yeah, it doesn't matter. I don't matter to me if 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 a developer finds a way to deliver this and hit pricing targets, then I don't, I'm not as fast about the entity that does that. To me, it's the outcome. We want units this price that have this control going forward. So and perhaps I'm, I'm, you know, there's a reason that we need to to limit this, but I think if we get this policy right, we want to see it happen. And I think that's actually a limitation that I I'm not convinced that we need going forward with this ownership model like we do need going forward with a rental model. And that's a concept I'd like us to 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 consider around around this table. And I hear the concerns. We don't want people, we don't want to be subsidizing by giving up you know, DC waiving charges and giving special, you know, considerations for setbacks and so on for folks to be profiting from from that. But if there's a way that that we're getting what it is that we're asking, then to me, that's that is acceptable. So I'd like to understand that. This again might be one of those categories of things that may never happen, but I think it's I think it's less important here as long as we clearly articulate what our expectations are and they're met when they're when the product hits the market. So I'd like us to see us advance this work and address things like this that will inform actually affordable housing policy. And that may need to be done before we adopt or get something over the line. But I do think that another wave of this coming back to us would be appropriate. So for that reason, I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Greenlaw, do you have follow-up comment?
I actually just wanted to hear the motion again, but Counselor Stoner sent it to me.
Very good. As for myself, I will support the current motion on the floor, Counselor Stoner's alternate recommendation. We have here a proposal for a good, important complement to the current suite of initiatives and policies and resources in our community for providing affordable providing housing. I look forward to future discussion, not only towards a well-baked template for affordable homeownership, but also for future steps in policy that have been identified. I will quote to Mr. Villaniscus, "We are going to learn a lot." With that, I will then call the question. All those in favor? We have Counselor Stoner, or excuse, Mayor Hereford opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. We will take a break then until 12:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to reconvene the January 24 Committee the whole. The next item up on our agenda is a presentation from the Planning Department on the Squamish Insight Model and Neighborhood Node Analysis Project, an update. I wonder if our staff could introduce themselves and proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Matt Gunn. I'm a planner with the District of Squamish, and I'm here with my colleagues.
My name is Maria. I'm a GIS technician.
And I'm Dan Griffin. I'm the manager of GIS and Data Services.
And we're here today to provide a brief update on the Squamish Insight Model and the Neighborhood Node Analysis. And in January 2024, Council supported an application to the UBCM Complete Communities Grant. That grant was awarded to the district in April of 2024, and from that grant, a temporary GIS position was funded. That's Maria, and she has been working diligently away on our project. The intention of the project is to complete Neighborhood Node Analysis based on GIS assessment. The analysis will be completed using a new tool, the Squamish Insight Model. That is the name that we're using now for what was formerly referred to as the Split Model. And the analysis will identify how the distribution and density of housing around the community and identified neighborhood nodes impacts walkable access to daily needs. We'll be able to analyze multiple scenarios and compare them against each other. And the anticipated completion date is in May. However, staff are currently in discussion with UBCM regarding an extension of the deadline for delivery of the final report until late 2025, which they're amenable to. And work on the Squamish Insight Model has focused exclusively on residential land uses. Employment uses have been excluded from the current work plan for a few reasons. First off, the focus has been placed on residential land uses to keep the scope achievable within the grant timeframe. We had some challenges, nonavailability of some in-house technical resources that challenged the employment space analysis. And for the Neighborhood Node Analysis Project, residential land use is the primary requirement, so aligned well with the UBCM grant application. However, the model has been designed in a way that employment land uses can be integrated at a later point, which is something that would be of great interest to staff and various departments. The Insight Model will feature three specific components: Squamish Now, Squamish Next, and Squamish Future. Squamish Now is intended to reflect current residential development and land uses across the community. Squamish Next is intended to reflect the community if all current residential development applications were approved by council and/or staff if they're delegated. This would include building permits, development permits, rezonings, and OCP amendments. The intention is to reflect development opportunities that have been deemed to have some viability by the development sector. And then the third component, Squamish Future, is intended to represent a long-term vision of the community that reflects some staff speculation on potential developments not currently under application. And that would provide some broad insight into long-term growth capabilities for the community and can inform decisions about infrastructure planning. It could also accommodate scenario planning. Squamish Future, that component, will be based on a supply-and-demand approach. The supply would be determined by scenarios of land use regulations, and demand would be determined by some recently completed demographic projections for the community. The first component, Squamish Now, is complete and offers some preliminary findings about the Squamish Housing Stock, which I'll share. There was a link in the staff report to the Squamish Now tools. Just out of curiosity, did anybody check that out? Yeah, there's a link there that you can go in, and we can show you in a minute. But out of that model, some of the outputs that we saw, and it's actually an interesting piece because it's something that we can update on an annual basis. So instead of just getting this snapshot in the census, we can get a bit more regular data. It does reflect a year ago's data because it comes from BC Assessment, and they provide us data on an annual basis. But out of that, we see that there are a total of 11,492 existing dwelling units within the community. Largest proportion of dwelling units are single-unit dwellings at 42%. The next most common are apartments at 31%. And then our model also identifies 1,200 secondary suites and 120 ADUs. That suite number is expected to exclude many suites that are unidentified by BC Assessment or the District of Squamish, but it is the best compilation now that we have had of how many secondary suites are in the area because we've pulled these multiple data sources that all identify some of them and correlated them to come up with a number. Squamish Now also provides some insight into housing stock at the neighborhood level, making it easy to compare housing diversity across the community. A few interesting insights from that include the following. Downtown has the most apartments where 1,541 units make up 68% of the dwellings. Garebaldi Highlands has the most single-unit dwellings where 1,020 units make up 92% of total dwellings. And Mam Plan, which is the informal name staff use for the neighborhood with Shannon Estates and the Public Works Yard, has the largest number of townhouses where 371 units make up 39% of the total dwellings. As noted, the project is underway, and since drafting the staff report, we've made some further progress on the project. We now have an initial version of Squamish Next linked from a tab at the bottom of the Squamish Now tool, and that tool gives us an overview of potential new development units that are proposed through development applications. Given that the tool is under development, this data does require more cleaning and refinement. So the numbers that we see in that tool are expected to shift as we go through. There's a lot of data checking and confirmation, and we're correlating multiple data sets. So there's sometimes some gaps or some overlap that we need to address. And one other thing about the Squamish Next is that it includes OCP applications, which don't generally have the level of specificity we would need to start integrating numbers together. So staff has had to make some assumptions or some estimates about what would be produced, and those are in discussion with the landowners. They're subject to lots of change, process, council decision-making. But it is important to try and start looking at these things and say what might come out of that if we do want to get a picture of where we're going. So we have to make these assumptions and estimates, and so that tool does reflect those realities. The Squamish Future does provide some interesting insights into the types of housing units that have been proposed through development applications for the community and where those units are proposed. For example, across the community, over 70% of new units that are proposed are apartments. So we have a high proportion of apartments that are coming. Around 20% are townhouses and 7% are single-unit dwellings. And we've got the numbers there on the screen for what is proposed under these development applications. We have 7,349 apartments proposed in the pipeline, 2,631 townhouses, and 716 single-unit dwellings. Nope. Okay. All right. And we can also see the distribution of those units across the community. Oceanfront and Waterfront are the location of the highest numbers of proposed units, followed by Brackendale and Crumpet Woods. Those areas reflect parts of our community where we have very large neighborhood plans with a large number of units, and those tend to generate the highest number of units. Now, one thing to note about those unit numbers that I've outlined, those are units that would come on over a very long period of time, many decades, and there's a high level uncertainty. Many projects may or may not eventually be approved or come to development. So these are speculative numbers that could represent one reality but could change in many ways. And it's really just a tool for us to understand where some of the potential scenarios of long-term growth could lead. Finally, with the Squamish Next tool, it's possible to examine individual neighborhoods to see and to look at the distribution of proposed dwelling units and the application stage at which they're at. That's the total of our conclusion. The recommendation is that committee receive the status update.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Questions from Council?
Yeah, thanks very much for bringing this forward. I'm a very big fan of knowing where we're at in data and having the tools to represent the data effectively. And I think this is a great example of how we're collecting data and representing it effectively. There's a lot of funding going into the project through the UBCM grant. But do we currently have secured budget or budget line items to continue the maintenance of this SIM project? Because we know that this sort of project is not sort of a one and done. It's going to require continuous maintenance. So do we have either that in the budget forecasts? Or do we have a plan to put that into our budget forecasts to be able to maintain this model?
Thank you. Through the chair, great question. So the nature of this, the tool that we're developing is something that, for a variety of reasons, staff of SOC and wanted to see created. It can help out, especially with infrastructure planning, but also land use planning. The grant that became available looked like it could be tied with the initial creation of the project, and so we pursued that, and we're in that process. We are going to get some good deliverables out of that. It's certainly going to help us with our next stage of the mandated OCP update. It's going to be a key for that, and the Neighborhood Node Analysis will be very helpful. But it is currently a project with funding for the development of the project. There certainly are some pieces that I can see inside the department that we would, especially infrastructure planning, updating our master plans with this updated information, and there may be some budget for that. But there is not, at this point, ongoing funding to support continued maintenance and expansion of this model. And so that is something that will need consideration if council is supportive of having continued use of this model or expansion of it into employment lands. And if there's anything more about the budget aspect, I'm just going to ask my director to see if he has anything that he'd like to add to that.
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Counselor Pedigree?
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate having this information and where this is headed. My one hesitation is just my discomfort around not including the employment piece. And especially for the next and future, in my mind, with their goals of mode shift and livability and so on, these things are closely tied together, and one may constrain the other. And so it's not clear to me that you can look at them in isolation and do employment later because if we are sort of saying your employment needs to actually match your housing, and if you can't, you know, unemployment doesn't work well there, then actually the housing shouldn't be there, even if, you know, otherwise it might work. So how do we sort of deal with that? Or do we actually need to look at, no, we need to find a way to fund the employment piece to really achieve what we want it to?
Through the chair. Yeah, great question. 100% agree. Everything we've done till now represents either the current scenario, so we've just built a database that we can look at what's currently in existence, or the development applications that are currently in the pipeline. So these are things we're talking about right now. If we want to do analysis to say, what makes sense? Like, do we need more employment space, or is this the right place for more people? What you're talking about is 100% true. We would really like to have that integrated, that employment piece. And some of the data collection that we've done, we've been collecting that employment data. It's a pretty big project, and it takes a lot of work to get everything working properly. And so just to keep making progress, we have focused on this residential piece. It's tied to the funding that we have, and we'll answer that question. But by changing the length of time of the utility of the grant, we may be able to start tackling the employment piece, but I totally agree. We need to get the employment there. And I think it would be very smart to start thinking about, should the project take, should we not be able to complete that employment space? It would be very nice to start thinking about how to budget for time and resources to address that because I think for the scenario planning, it would be very good to have that information. It's just another big part of the project. And to be honest, one of the people who is part of our team at the outset has moved to a different role, and that person had a lot of the technical knowledge related to employment. And it'll take some additional support to make that move. So we have clear things that we have to address in the immediate term, in particular, the OCP update that we're going to have to do for the province. But the employment piece is very important, and I think it's very worthwhile to think about resourcing support for that.
So sorry, if I understand, and I may have been trying to put words in your mouth a bit here, but we could sort of, with the current sculpting and residential exclusive focus, do the sort of quick OCP amendment for the province, but to really do the holistic OCP review, that's where we really need the employment piece as well, is that?
Through the chair. Yes, so we can certainly get done what the OCP update required by the province entails. For more robust scenario planning, especially if we go into a future point, an OCP update where we want to look at scenarios. I think one of the great things about this tool is we're going to be able to say, let's look at scenarios. Like, let's imagine that we have all the development on this possible land that we know is up for potential. How many people will we have, and how many jobs will we have, and how close will those be? Those types of scenario planning exercises, which I think would be a fantastic piece to take into an OCP. We need to do more work to do that. I don't know what we'll see. We might be able to start tackling that, but I don't know if we'll be able to get through it. And I think it would, yes, be very worthwhile to resource that and think about how to do that. Also, for infrastructure planning, the master planning, they typically require inputs that are how many people and how many jobs because the commercial space obviously generates outputs. So really, like, we're doing as much as we can to get this tool going. We may need more to keep it going beyond the funding of the UBCM grant.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair.
Thank you. Through the chair. Here and can only appreciate how much work has probably gone into collecting the different data sets, cleaning them, making them compatible. Does that get easier now that we've kind of done the initial set of work? Or is it just, we need to redo that every year when the data sets are updated?
Through the chair, I'll pass this over to the technical wizards of the organization. Who wants to talk to that?
I can speak to that through the chair. Yeah, so a large part of the data came from BC assessment, although we had to review and do a lot of data cleanup to get that data into a format that we could actually report on. We get that data from BC assessment annually. It's called the building information report. And includes a lot of this data. And now that we've identified some issues and some gaps with the data that they're providing, our plan is to report back to BC assessment about what what corrections could be made. So we have that data set. We're also using data that comes from our Tempest database, which is our development database for tracking applications. And we've identified some key attributes that we, we need to start collecting within that database. Right, this initial go through, we did a lot of that work manually. So if we can automate some of these processes, and that was our plan as well, that that will help greatly. So to answer your question, yes, I think we could streamline the process going forward. Likely on an annual basis, we could report out on these figures and 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 keep track and and keep this database live for the future.
That's great and appreciate that takes time and resources, but it'd be a shame to put all this effort into building it and then see it become obsolete. My other question is just with the advent of the next portion, which you just linked to. The numbers for the purpose-built townhouses and rental units, are those in addition to what is in the now model or is that total?
Through the chair. So that this is just like we're, to be honest, we stretched to try and have something to give you a sense of where we're going. And so it it's in a very early stage. Right now, it's what's in the pipeline. It is not a cumulative combination of the existing and the coming. And so that would be a next stage where we would put them together and you can see what is the Highlands look like once everything that's proposed gets filled combined with existing. We didn't get there yet, but we're working towards it. And the other thing I want to say about that, the strata versus rental. The, you know, for for applications that we have in the DP stage or, you know, maybe the rezoning, we have a bit more data. A lot of, a high number of the units that are proposed are at OCP level because they're in neighborhood lands. And for those, we've generally just attributed strata to them, knowing that you sort out strata and rental at a later point. And it's where, at that OCP level stage, we're just saying how many, it's, it's too hard to get tenure at that point. So those numbers would shift a lot as you move forward, but not combined at this point.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Horford?
Thank you. Does this represent, like a snap, a snapshot in in time, like he chose a date and was everything of that time? So some of the, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, through the chair, it represents, and there's a, there's a little splash page at the start that says that the Squamish Now represents twenty twenty-three July, I think. That's the BC assessment data is collected in the summer of the previous year. We get it at start of the next year. So I think what we have in Squamish Now represents twenty twenty-three July. So it doesn't represent buildings that were completed. So for example, some apartments at waterfront aren't there. Those two big six-story apartments, they're, they weren't completed when we get the snapshot. Then the Squamish Next is all of our application data we have right now that's underway. So yeah, there's, what's in the past is a bit old and the future is what we can see move.
Okay, so that's helpful. I think it's, I was trying to understand the the leg. I've dealt with a few pieces where the inputs are coming from different points in time. It's hard to sort of reconcile, so I want to make sure I understand it. So at that date, we're using the same date for applications since that date up to now. It's sort of like, like when this gets opera, like fully functioning, i- is that the intent? You'd have like a, as a, you know, this one set date per year, this is what it looks like. And this is how we're evolving over, over time? Or is this something that the community, or we could expect to evolve like a development showcase moves from time to time as new things come in and so on?
Through the chair, the Squamish Now will always represent the data from the last collection point a summer ago. The Squamish Next should be pretty much live. There's, there's, we'll have to figure out a process for addressing building permits that are completed since last summer and aren't alive, a development application. But that's something that will resolve and be able to have the Squamish Next generally accommodating everything that has happened and what's, what's in process. It should be fairly comprehensive, would you say? Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just say with, in terms of the specific timelines, so Masquerade BC Assessment completes their evaluation of properties in the summer. They provide us with the completed roll in January of the, of the next year. And then the building information report, which outlines the building structures and what they all can, you know, they're contained in square footage and whatnot. That information comes to us at the end of March. So that's kind of the, the timeline for the BC assessment data. And as Matt said, that the, the development information, the, the applications that are ongoing, we did a review and, and basically took anything from the last point of BC assessment data and included any of those development, development applications that were in stream up until this point. So that's sort of that gap. And then we looked at what was coming in terms of the future as well. So that's all included in that, in that, in that model and the Squamish Next model as well.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful context. And I suppose at some future state, we could have the, you know, development showcase. I know development showcase isn't the, like, what's proposed isn't the only input in that. It's also building permits, like things that wouldn't show there. But that would be sort of automated in a way that could, could, or could be automated in a way to feed into this, to keep that piece in real time. Because I think you have that, like, snapshot of time in the past. And you've got the future piece, which will be modeled at some point and maybe evolve over time. But there shouldn't be as much variability there. And it's that piece in the middle that I'm trying to understand how we communicate that in a, or how we use that, 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 keep that as live as possible.
Through the chair, maybe, I think maybe I'm understanding your question is, if we are only updating once a year, there could be a whole bunch of development applications that we're missing. And people look at Squamish Next and say, hey, we're actually missing a bunch of stuff. Squamish Next will be much more easy for us to keep live with the incoming data because it'll be linked, we're not beholden to the annual update from BC assessment. So the Squamish Next moving forward will be easier to keep live, I think. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yes.
And where I was sort of going with this was the, like, that variability of the pieces that haven't been to coun- to council yet. So, yeah, I know it's important to, and this could be an interesting piece to help us contextualize how it fits in a bigger picture. We're always trying to, trying to step back, but recognizing the variability that, you know, council may not, it may not make, make it through the process of of council, just how we, so I'd like it to inform that decision. But also, if we're going to pull pieces from this that are a communication tool or have the public view this in in some way, we need to make sure that we, you know, are clear what it is and what it, and what it isn't as far as, you know, is this aspirational or is this just like, is this the desired outcome? Or is this just what's been applied and we're going to need to counsel or the community is going to need to grapple with that? So delineating that is sort of what I was attempting to get into.
Through the chair. Okay, I think I, I think maybe now I've got it. I, I think, is, is, is your point that there's some big numbers in there for a neighborhood plan, for example. And we want to make it clear that some of these things are at rezoning stage and have more certainty. And some have a lot more uncertainty and there's more chance that they could change or not be approved. And certainly, we can, we tried to put it, there's a disclaimer at the bottom of the, the Squamish Next page that tries to highlight that. But yeah, the, the, the numbers are separated out by the application type. And we could further expand on the information around the certainty associated with those.
Yeah, I think, I know this thing could all be caveats in the future state. You know, we have the snapshot that is the snapshot of the, the historical piece. But that going forward piece, I think, being as, without having caveats across the whole, the whole thing be, you know, the, that very future model, this is sort of the carrying capacity. This is sort of what we're planning, we need to keep in mind as a maximum that's likely outcome based on zoning, all the rest of it. But that space in between, we really need to articulate that, that those are applications that were, that council may or may not have, have, have processed or touched or may not approve ultimately. And I think that's a piece too, because I think some of the numbers are. Well, work in this space is always so challenging when you look at existing community, existing neighborhoods and the community emotion that comes with that. So I think we want to be very clear about where, where that is. So I'll leave that, I'll leave that with you. But that's my one piece that didn't really, I didn't think it was as, as in the front as I, as, as it could be to, to sort of help with that conversation piece that this could be used to support.
Further questions, council? Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very, thanks very much for, from you the explanation of the, the data sets. I think I have a picture. Do I understand correctly that so the, basically Squamish Now is coming from the building information report from BC assessment? While BC, while Squamish Next is coming from the BC assessment report plus Tempest, which is, the Tempest is our database for development applications in stream. Is that correct? And then Squamish Future is really coming from the OCP. And what we plan to do, is that a roughly correct understanding?
Through the chair. So there, there's a bit more that goes into Squamish Now. It is B, the BC assessment BIR, but it's also, it includes some of our information. For example, suites and ADUs, we've, some of that information comes from BC assessment, but they don't catch everything. We also go to our building permits to see what's been approved. We also go to our, our utilities billing because we bill for them. And so when we take all those sets in, we get a more complete picture. And there are multiple.
And I think we should clarify too, that, so the suites and ADUs, the suites in particular, that's right, like we've, we've taken a bunch of different data sources. It, it doesn't necessarily mean that those suites are being used as suites currently. They could have been identified in the BC assessment data set as a property with a suite. Whether that's rented out or not, we, we, we can't say for sure. And there's likely also lots of suites in there that are being rented out that we're not aware of. So there's some nuances within the data that that we should be aware of too. And yeah, the building permit information is feeding into this as well, but more into the.
And and from the DC assessment data, they, they have multiple data sets that we've had to put together. There's a building information report and residential inventory. So we have two data sets that we have to combine, which is not a hundred percent easy, but that's part of the work. You're right in that the Squamish Next is largely a reflection of our Tempest information, although for applications like the OCP, OCP level applications. So these are development applications, somebody's working on an OCP update. But we may, we don't necessarily have unit numbers. We have to discuss with them, come up with some numbers. Squamish Future reflects a bit more. So, so we haven't started working on this. We've got a conceptual idea of how it's going to work, but it's going to require us that, that, there are two things we're going to do. One, we're going to try and figure out what could the land base support? And land base could support different things under different scenarios. So we have to create, we're going to create profiles. So if a certain property has this characteristic, and we could assume there's a low density profile and high density profile, create profiles for the variety of types of lands out there, handle big pieces of land individually, like just come up with a description of that and combine that to create a capacity. Then we're taking population projections, which are divided into ground oriented and apartments. And we're using that as the demand to try and fill the capacity based on its highest likelihood of being developed. So one more layer is that we'll create, we'll, we'll rank using a redevelopment index. Essentially, the likelihood, like if a property is a high value and a low built form on it, then that property is probably more likely to be redeveloped. And so we'll use some factors like that to rank the properties and the likelihood to be redeveloped, fill them from the demand at the level that the scenarios we're using would support. And then that would be a scenario, here's what the future looks like. So it's, it's got a bunch of speculations and assumptions that will feed these scenarios.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think so. The Squamish Future understandably is the one with the greatest uncertainty, right? And that's, that's the crystal, that's really the crystal ball, right? But this is a tool to help us, hopefully, my, my, my hope is it's a tool that'll help us navigate different options for the information we do have. Do we have, one of the important pieces of every model is how well you know the numbers, right? And you've alluded to the challenge of integrating data, data sets. And one of the ways you deal with that within the scientific context is to put actual uncertainties on your numbers. Like, we know this number, we know there are one thousand five hundred units, and we expect there are maybe plus or minus a hundred units, or maybe plus or minus ten units. Is there any possibility or any scope to include uncertainty or how well we know these numbers in the numbers themselves, or is that way outside the scope or way outside the framework?
Through the chair, I would say that's a great point. We actually haven't put our minds to that. But I think it is a, is a good point. That will be most relevant at Squamish Future, and so we can certainly look at how we might tackle that. There is relevance in Squamish Next with the OCP level neighborhood planning applications, because those are the elements that have uncertainty. They're not reflective of an application number. And we can think about that. I, I, I imagine there's a way for us to categorize and then identify that those are going to be variable and probably create some ranges. But yeah, it's, it's a good point, something we hadn't thought of yet.
And my last question, is there any hope of doing a Squamish yesterday? So I, I don't mean digging back into the archives. I mean preserving, once we have this model running, preserving that data, preserving the historical data so that we can, for example, in ten or twenty years from now, when we want to project ten or twenty years into the future, can we look back and see how well we projected? Can we look back and see how well did our, did our approximations or did our assumptions work in the model in the past to inform our model in the future?
Yep, through the chair, that's certainly usable. Depending on what that timeframe, we want to, we want to have an annual, maybe look back or view of the data is certainly possible. I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, through the chair. The other community in BC that has done something like this, which we've met with and taken some, some inspiration from is Colona. They have a, not a dissimilar model, and they said they snapshot each year. And then they can go back and look and see, and they actually use it. I was talking about the probability of redevelopment. They've used looking at snapshots to see how their probability of redevelopment has been accurate or inaccurate. And that will be an important tool for us because we will be refining that, like, because we're trying to project what's the likelihood of something redeveloping. They've, we've largely based what we're going to do on some factors that they've come up with. But we may find other factors are more relevant because we're doing less info and more greenfield in our community. And so, yeah, I think we'll be snap, we'll, we'll, we'll create snapshots and then look back to see how they compare.
Thanks. Counselor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Through the chair, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this. I used to do a lot of GAS databases and I feel your pain on that data aspect of, that's what I used to do. But I, I was wondering if there's going to be an export function of data.
I can speak to that, or do you want to speak to that?
Through the chair. Do you mean from the Squamish now, like on the website with the individual graphs and charts? Or like the entire data set for Squamish now?
I guess from my perspective, what I would find most useful, because I've actually tried to compile this data several times from what we currently have available, and it is painful. But from my perspective, it would be great to export, like, how many three-bedroom units are, are coming through development? Like two-bedroom, one-bedroom and like, like seeing that data in my hot little hands is what kind of I want to do without, without contacting staff, which I, I could too. But I'm just wondering if there would be an easy export function or if that's a whole new can of worms. That's, that's too much effort.
So this data is publicly available. It's PC assessment data. There's no private information in there. It's, it's all public information. So likely, we could have a link through open data portal that will allow people to access the data directly. The development permits as well, they're, they're on our open data port, portal currently, but. but not really organized in a way that speaks to what we're, the work that we're doing here. So maybe building some queries or tools that would allow people to interact with the data. Maybe, I don't know, A I.
Through the chair, I do want to highlight one thing to that question, which you mentioned bedroom numbers. At the outset of this process, our previous housing needs report had spoken to bedroom numbers. And so we had started trying to go down that road. The new legislation from the province just really speaks to units. It doesn't even actually break out by unit type and certainly not bedroom numbers. And gathering the data on existing housing on bedroom numbers. There, there's some, but it was, there was some, there was, there was another layer of complexity and work to do that. And so we're going down a road of unit types and, and some broad categories. We aren't at this point doing bedroom numbers. I just wanted to highlight that. I know it's a very interesting piece and it's something I am interested in, but I just want to highlight that that isn't, for a variety of reasons, the current path that we're on.
Sure, I guess like, well, I mean, I do think that is something that would be good to consider for future data sets. But it's more, I guess in this case, it's more like which ones have gone, like how many units have gone through building permits, developing permits, like which stages they're in, but actually having the numbers, like just extracting in Excel platform. But I, you know, I understand it's not as easy as just pushing a button when you do these things. But I was just wondering if that's something that you're considering.
Yeah, it's certainly possible for sure to do.
Further questions? I have one matter I'm curious about. Mr. Gund, you've mentioned the obvious relevance of this work to updating master plans and also the O C P, of course. We have one master plan currently being updated and it's been presented to council in draft form and coming back to us again. And namely, that's the transportation master plan. Now, as a member of the working group for the earlier transportation plan that goes back a ways, 2010, 2011, the multimodal transportation plan used with the help of some consultants working with this at the time, heat maps, residential density heat maps to discuss and plan and recommend improvements to active transportation. And an example, the heat map obviously showed there's a gap in transportation, active transportation infrastructure between Valley Cliff and the downtown, two big blobs on the map that were not as well connected as they might be. My question is, has this work? Or is it already relevant for the use of the transportation master plan team? Do they see, or is it something that they can dive into at this point? Or we were back in the dark ages, perhaps a little bit 15 years ago. But I'm just curious about how that master plan update might make use of this work at this time.
Through the chair. Or to the chair. The, at the outset of the transportation master plan, and actually any of the asset management plans, one of the early stages is in contact from engineering to planning, saying, we need to know what the future looks like. Give us a picture of employees and residential or residential population. At that time, we said, hey, we're working on this project. We might have it in time. The timelines were too long once we sorted through their project timeline. And so I painstakingly went through property by property and actually created a population and employment distribution for the community. That was actually quite a bit of time. That is what we don't, won't need to do once this thing has employment and is up and running. I really was like weeks and weeks of work to create something like that. And it wasn't as robust as this will be, but they do have a good set of fairly comprehensive and thoughtful projections for both employment and, and residential. It's just, this will be better to utilize on an ongoing basis for projects as they come up in a more efficient fashion. They certainly they, I have sent it to the residential, I mean, the transportation team, actually married to one of them. So she knows what's going on. But they're quite a ways away and there, there's quite a bit of alignment between what this is representing and the information that we manually put together. So they have something fairly good, this is just going to be better.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions at this time? We do have a staff recommendation, which is that the committee, our committee received the status update on the development of the Squamish insight model, SIM, we'll have to get used to that acronym. And that the neighborhood node analysis project is outlined in this committee, the whole report of today be received for information. And Counselor French, you are mover and Counselor Hamilton seconds, further discussion.
Thanks, Chair. When, when I clicked through to a thing, I immediately got how valuable this is and saw the potential, not just for residential, but also for employment lands. And this is very exciting work and I really appreciate getting this, this update and the insight into how this is working and where it's taking us.
Yeah, as I said, I really appreciate this data. It's exciting stuff. I find it exciting having these numbers. I am, again, though, want to be really cautious about how we present, how we speak about and how we sort of share the next and future numbers before we have the employment work done. And so with that caveat in mind and sort of understanding of why and so on, I'm happy to, you know, see this go forward and hope that in our strategic planning and as budgeting comes up, that we have a real good understanding of what it'll take to get the employment piece added in insufficient time. And I just, you know, my hesitation is just having people misunderstand or build up a lot of expectations around next and future housing numbers that are really absent of critical employment numbers. And so just making sure we don't get too far down that road. Thank you. Mayor Hurford?
Yeah, thank you. Incredible piece of work here and I really appreciate how the complex static is, is presented in a way that I won't apply this to the rest of the table, but to someone that's sitting in my seat that can actually, that really needs to understand through that bigger, that bigger picture. And, you know, the, the heat mapping, the, the like, the level that we have detail we can get into in the neighborhoods. And I think it's, it's really, really helped. I can see this being just so helpful going forward with decisions around this table and policy recommendations coming from, from staff as well. So this is an incredible piece of work and I look forward to seeing what the next steps are here and how we can use this tool to inform decisions going forward. So yeah, it's really exciting and thank you so much for, for, for doing this and look forward to seeing that next bit.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thank you very much. Strongly support this, this work. It's extraordinarily, extraordinarily user friendly from the draft, the piece that's been presented. Fantastic work on that. And I think that's a critical piece of this. We need to really consider how user friendly our information is so that people can actually use, access and understand our information. So great job on that. I think that the, I'm strongly supportive of Counselor Greenlaw's idea of some export or some A P I, because I can envision a lot of ways that other people, other organizations can use this data in a meaningful way to, to help us and them. And I think making our data available is extremely important because all the work that goes into cleaning the data shouldn't need to be reproduced. So, so I strongly support that. And I'd like to, yeah, just be sure that around the council table, that we think about this model moving forward. I can only imagine this will cost a reasonable amount of money to maintain this model. So I hope that it does come forward within a timely manner so that we can see the budget that's expected to, to maintain this model and keep it an ongoing piece of work that we can continue to rely on. I'm personally very supportive of having this as a tool we can rely on and councils in 20 years can rely on to make decisions. Thanks.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair. Many of my comments have already been said by my colleagues, so I won't repeat them, but thanks for the work. A really valuable tool. I appreciate there's a motion on the floor, but I am curious if the comments around budget would require a subsequent motion or clarity from council. Because that is my one consideration is we are putting a lot of time and energy and effort into billing this. And I would like to be able to understand what ensuring that this is available in the long term, as well as considering what the employment component is going to look like. So maybe I will follow up with a motion after this.
There are no other comments at this time. Oh, Counselor Greenlaw, please go.
Thanks, thanks again for all of the hard work. Like I said, I'm pretty excited. I'm a G I S nerd, so that works well for me. And having this level of information available, like just readily accessible, is just a critical piece for good decision making, in my opinion. Like I said several times in the past couple of years, I've tried to compile some of this information on my own using our online tools. And it has, well, I gave up every time. So I'm really happy to see this information coming forward because like this, this information is stuff that I really, I really value. I really need this information for making good decisions. I think in terms of, of data to be captured, I think you've captured most of what I'd like to see, but just for clarity, I'll state some of it here. I really liked the breakdown of the Squamish next, the building permits, development permits, rezoning and O C P. I'd like to see a breakdown of the studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three plus. Also, the ownership types, ownership, affordable ownership, ownership, rental, non-market rental. If there is a breakdown of that and an export function, I would find valuable, not just for me, but you know, as Counselor Hamilton pointed out, different, different groups might be interested in that information as well. And in that export piece, if it ever does exist, it might be useful to know when these projects reach certain thresholds, because like one of the things we talked about around this, this table is like sunset clauses for development. Like it's useful to know if, if some project's been sitting out there for 10 years and is now forgotten about. No, there it is again, kind of thing, right? Like is this a dormant project? That kind of information and the names of the developers. But yeah, I think it's really an excellent product that really improves the district's transparency around development and growth and not just for the counselors and people involved in decision making, but also for members of the public. So I'm really, really excited about this. So thank you.
We have in our council strategic plan, under the goal of being prepared for the future, a specific objective and it's cited in the staff report, namely 4.4, create a net increase of employment lands and spaces both on land and marine by September 2026. I think there's going to still be an outstanding challenge to, to grasp this and address it to the extent we should. The report uses the phrasing complete community throughout. And in some of the places where I see this phrasing, I wonder whether it should instead read complete neighborhood. Because when we consider employment lands and other categories of land uses, such as recreational cultural facilities, we're looking at a community wide perspective. Or there is a different perspective at the community wide level. Some of these, these references, I honestly think might should be translated to or changed to complete neighborhoods. This is really practically what we're talking about often. So as regards recreational cultural amenities and facilities, these are of course part of a complete community and indeed a complete neighborhood as we are visiting in our neighborhood planning work. It requires a little bit of a different analysis, a different effort, but it is one that we need to complete the picture, that overall goal of completeness. And employment lands, as my colleagues have also referred to, we have a long list of businesses that are really in, have pressing need for land solutions. Often these are medium industrial land use needs and we don't have a solution. And this, the people on this list are everybody from G F L to key transportation providers in the community, looking for solutions and multitude of businesses. And the list keeps growing. These businesses are not in the population serving category of our economy. They are export services, export goods, and tourism is one of them. Tourism is an export service, bringing in money from outside. So we need, when we consider employment lands, to consider population servicing businesses, but also the goods and services that we export elsewhere, and that's not population dependent. We have had a series of reports in the economic development department on industrial lands and employment lands. And the most interesting one to my mind was one where the staff hit the sidewalk and conducted interviews or invited input from, from individual companies. It provided a lot of insight and I believe the members of the last council unanimously saw the value of that effort. In fact, I think that's what we need to do. We need to be careful about the limitations of modeling and hit the sidewalk to understand the diversity of attributes in land and land uses that are out there that will not be captured by modeling. It's easier to model population serving enterprise, but it's not so easy to model that episodic demand for export businesses, tourist commercial businesses that wouldn't be related or easy enough to capture. I wonder sometimes why it is so difficult to find grant money for projects like this. I, it occurs to me every year at the U B C M, when I meet with the real estate foundation, they have no grant program serving industrial land study, which is surprising since with our, our big problem of industrial land throughout our South Coast region. Maybe we should write a letter. Maybe I should. Final two points. I think the public will really look forward to diving into the Squamish insight model as it becomes more available and advertised on our website. With respect to Counselor Stoner's observation that there's more work to do and we should be talking about how we're going to approach this, we do have an upcoming review of our strategic plan. And that may be an opportunity to come to terms with what we mean by that creating a net increase of, increase of employment lands and what we should do about it. Leave my comments at that. Now call the question. All those in favor receiving the report? Thank you. I see there's none opposed, motion is carried. Counselor Stoner?
I'd like to follow up with a subsequent motion for council consideration, which is that the maintenance and further development of the Squamish insight model to include employment modeling be brought forward for consideration in the 2026 budget.
Yes, sir, seconded. Counselor Greenlaw seconds. And speakers to the motion. Mayor Hurford?
Well, I was going to go to staff just to ask what that, what that looks like currently. I support them, I support the motion, but is this something that was, we're going to all this effort to create, to create this? How were we looking to solve that, the maintenance piece? Because there's a lot of work here. So this is one mechanism and I'm supportive of that, but I guess I would have asked that question, but we're in debate now. So I think that's fine. I'll support it that way, but I, I just, that's where I was hoping we get that and see if there is, what that answer was. But I'll, I'll support the motion as it, as it stands here.
Very good. And we're clear on the motion? Then I'll call, oh, Counselor Greenlaw, did you wish to speak?
I was just going to speak in favor of the motion. Again, I've, I've worked a lot on data sets like this and unfortunately they do become useless if there isn't upkeep to them and, and it's a massive loss of of opportunity really and, and a waste of money if we don't keep it up. Again, I used to be a data nerd, so I feel strongly about these things. So thanks. There you go, that's the one.
Then I'll call the question. All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much to our staff. Counsel, we're, we're about a couple of minutes ahead of schedule. Did you wish to take a quick break at this time? That's what we'll do then. Why don't we return at 25 minutes to two? Thank you. So we will reconvene the committee, the whole meeting, with the upcoming presentation on the Squamish Estuary Management Plan and Estuary Management Committee follow-up, with our senior planner Sarah McJanet, joined by Jonas Velaniskas. Please proceed.
Purpose today is to follow up on several Squamish Estuary Management Plan and Estuary Management Committee-related items that were discussed in May of 2023. Staff acknowledge that substantial time has passed before we've returned to committee, as we've been juggling and advancing many priority files over the last 18 months. Nonetheless, I apologise for the delay and look forward to providing any necessary clarifications and receiving final direction of council on the motions and the report before you today. So first, just looking back to that May 2023 meeting, staff presented an update on marine and estuary-related planning matters, as well as the status of SEMC. Meeting participation, as council knows, was eroding. Substantive progress on governance and mandate was not being made, and SEMC meetings stopped being convened mid-2019 due to limited staffing and priority workload constraints. At that meeting in May, staff also asked for council endorsement to pivot and step back from our past recommendation to establish a standing district-supported marine working group that was identified in the 2018 Marine Action Strategy. In the end, creating a standing marine committee was not recommended as the most effective mechanism for engagement, given capacity reasons. As to motions that were passed at the May 9 meeting, council allowed carry forward of special project funds for estuary coordination, and the, the remaining items were, and decisions were deferred. Council directed staff to firstly host another SEMC meeting and to step down as chair, then return to council committee to discuss the remaining items. Today's objective is threefold. As requested of council, we've provided background documentation respecting the Estuary Management Plan and Estuary Management Committee in advance of this meeting. Secondly, we present a draft letter to send to past SEMC members and representatives, formally advising the district is and effectively has since 2019 stepped down as last acting chair and not resourcing future participation on SEMC. At this point, a written letter is being recommended in lieu of calling a meeting to step down, given the time that has passed, as the district has not convened a meeting for five years, where quorum and consensus building was increasingly a challenge to obtain, which was frustrating members. Third, we are re-presenting the recommendation to not resource a standing district-supported estuary marine working group or committee at this time. To summarise, there's a lot of background documentation that you've been provided with over time. The Estuary Management Plan and its committees have a very important and well-documented history. As you know, the plan was commissioned first by DFO and Ministry of Environment in 1979, and then reviewed many times and updated over time. And finally, the 1999 plan created the SEMC advisory body, which is made up of Squamish Nation, federal and provincial governments, and broad representation in the community, including industry, commerce, conservation, recreation groups, and BC Rail. Associated committees supported decades of integrated resource planning and management and cross-sector engagement to balance environmental, economic and community interests. There are many notable achievements under the SEMC plan and by its subcommittees, including the creation of the Wildlife Management Area, so over 600 hectares of protected conservation land, and major habitat restoration and removal of dredge spoils and decommissioning of the former log sort in the central estuary. Both the Estuary Review Committee and the Estuary Management Committee operationalised and administered the plan and were responsible for integrating stakeholder interests, reviewing projects within the plan area. And while these committees functioned well for many years, the decline in federal and provincial agency involvement left the review committee defunct and unable to fulfil its original mandate. So there was no more coordinated project review, as government legislation had changed and moved away from that integrated resource management model. Founding senior governments, DFO and Environment Canada and the province of BC halted their involvement with SEMC due to shifting mandates and limited resources. The role of SEMC chair, who is responsible for facilitating the meetings, finalising agendas and recording decisions, this was originally held by the province and then eventually transitioned to the district. With modest funding from the municipality, SEMC conducted internal review to examine roles and governance in 2015, and continued with limited function and effectiveness, given these capacity gaps. Also, there was acknowledgement at the SEMC table that not all interests were represented in the broader marine area outside of the SEMC and plan area scope. As part of the SEMC review in 2016 to 2018, during our OCP update, with the help of SEMC, we embedded Estuary Management Plan objectives and area designations into our Squamish 2040 OCP. And it very much informed and established the ecological foundation for land and marine use planning within our community plan. Although council had directed continued engagement to determine mandate and scope for a replacement working group, through subsequent meetings, it was acknowledged that the committee was not functioning effectively, and several more members stated they would step away. The last meeting that we chaired was in 2019, and we just wanted to highlight that municipal resources are very much limited and focused on strategic priorities and budgeted work plans. We have continued to engage SEMC members and organisations and maintain relationships through other means. And typically, this has been through project-specific basis engagement programmes. And so for clarity, we continue to sit with and work with the Squamish River Watershed Society and the Squamish Environment Society and stewardship groups through the Central Estuary Restoration Project, as well as DFO and Squamish Nation. We continue to work on marine access with Squamish Wind Sports through the sub-licensing for Pepeham, and authorisations with the province and management items in the WMA. And another really good example of how we continue to engage outside of a committee format was with the marine zoning update, where we engaged all past SEMC members, as well as Tourism Squamish and the, and the chamber, and broader engagement in the community to participate. And so that was one example. And then the other example is through the engagement of a working group dedicated for the Mamquem Blaine Channel Long-Term Maintenance Strategy. So those are examples of other ways that engagement has, has continued. Moving to the crux of the report, recommendations before council. Respecting motion number one, the background materials have been provided, and they highlight the purpose of the Estuary Management Plan, ensuring ecological integrity is sustained and that there's sufficient land and water area designated to enable industrial, commercial, recreational and transportation uses to support our economic base. And we've provided information about the SEMC committee membership terms of reference and the role of chair and plan coordinator. membership terms of reference and the role of chair and plan coordinator. In the report attachments, we also detailed how the Estuary Management Plan has been integrated into the district OCP, and how designations and policies provide ongoing guidance in our living plan. Motion number two is the SEMC notification letter. So we have drafted the letter, as noted, for endorsement, for input and endorsement today. And the letter advises the District of Squamish will no longer be participating or resourcing future Estuary Management Committee activities. Effectively, this would provide closure and clarity for all and formally conclude the district's past role as last acting chair of SEMC under its 2011 terms of reference. The letter also, I wanted to point out, acknowledges the balance of many interests and mandates and the contributions of governments and stakeholders in Squamish. And it does commit to, commit the district to meaningful ongoing engagement on estuary and marine-related projects and initiatives on a project basis, instead of resourcing a standing district-supported community committee at this time. And then thirdly, motion three, as noted, seeks council direction to not proceed with the creation of a standing SEMC replacement coordinating body at this time. We highlight that standing committees require substantive administrative and staffing support across the organization. Both governmental and community organizational capacity constraints exist, which is especially challenging without capacity funding. Senior governments will not readily return to committee tables nor participate in community-based planning and coordination, given their focused mandates, jurisdictional specificity, and resource constraints. And also, government staff, as well as local organizations, are increasingly engaged in many local and regional initiatives, led by organizations themselves. And also, we're convened, for instance, under the Biosphere Region. So we have Conservation Network gatherings, Ocean Watch Action Committee meetings, there's a Habitat Connectivity Project. So there's a lot of excellent work that's happening under these various initiatives that are, do require participation, but are not necessarily in a committee format that we're leading. And finally, engaging by other more direct means, such as project-based engagement that has been occurring in practice over the last five years, staff see this as very viable alternative to maintain relationships and engage directly with organizations and governments in a meaningful way. The recommendations before council in the report of today, January 14, are shown on the screen. There are some alternative motions presented that staff be directed to convene another SEMC meeting rather than send a letter or another direction of council. But we will pause there. Pachka, thank you. I will take any questions and comments that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McJanet. Counsel questions? Starting with Counselor Penneygo.
I'm just wondering if staff happen to know, and I'm sorry, I should have thought to ask this beforehand, but where Squamish Nation is in their marine use planning process?
Thank you through the chair. In our last Ocean Watch Action Committee meeting, we got confirmation that the nation is hiring for a project coordinator for their marine use plan. So they are definitely have initiated the project. They're getting underway. We don't have any further update at this point.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm wondering, staff, am I correct in saying there's nothing in the district budget to cover any costs associated with expenditures related to meetings of people connected to the Squamish Estuary Management Plan and the Squamish Estuary Management Committee?
Through the chair, that's correct. There's no current budget allocated on a special project basis or through operational budgets for this currently.
Okay. And in reading through all the documentation, I'm looking for a staff take on a thought. Is it fair to state that senior levels of government initiated and funded the Squamish Estuary Management Plan, then, over time, downloaded the funding and the leadership to the District of Squamish? To call this as it is, I think, are we being hit with downloading through what has happened with this issue?
Through the chair, the original plan was commissioned and developed by Environment Canada Development, or sorry, Department of Fisheries and Oceans and the province of BC. And we are a signatory to the plan. So we have been at the table from the beginning as a government to implement the plan and to be involved in the committees and play a role. As those senior, many of those senior governments stepped away, we had continued commitment to stay at the table as, along with Squamish Nation. But neither government at the table, Squamish Nation or the District of Squamish, both governments, I would say, have had capacity constraints and funding limitations, for sure. So while we've been fully committed, it has become increasingly challenging to lift up and hold up the committee at a regular, at regular intervals. But also because of the mandate originally around the plan review and coordinated project referrals, et cetera, the environment has completely changed around us, and the legislation has changed as well. So there is no more model for kind of that coordinated project review. Those senior governments are regulators, and they have their own legislation and process. So that whole component of the work has not been able to be, to function in that way. I don't know, because estuary management plans are so unique, I don't know if we can sort of call them like, I would characterize it as downloading. It's just times have changed. And so I think we have seen the continued commitment around all of the stakeholders and organizations within the community. And so we've been trying to support that continued engagement for a long time.
Okay, Chair, one more. Wind Sports, Squamish Terminals, Squamish Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Squamish, other local entities are looking for government leadership related to estuary planning and also management. So I'd like to hear from staff, any thoughts on how to best deliver what the community is looking and asking for?
Thank you for the question. Through the chair, I think for the district, leadership has continued through the work of the official community plan update, the extensive work with, at the SEMC table involving SEMC itself, as well as some additional support to integrate and ensure that all of those area designations and major policies are embedded in our highest level community plan. So that was our first, our first step. And then further to that, through the Marine Action Strategy and identifying the importance of coordination and shared leadership. And then through the implementation of many of the different actions that are identified through marine zoning, through work to engage the community around other long-term maintenance strategy, for example, within the Mamquon Blind Channel, trying to continue to work towards solutions and understanding needs for transportation and access. All of those things and the engagement that has been involved in all of those sub- projects, I think, is, shows our level of commitment to the community around ongoing engagement. We also understand that Tourism Squamish and the Chamber are highly entrusted in continued engagement. They were never heavily involved or like within the membership list at SEMC table, but we have continued to engage many of those groups and beyond through the work, through the engagement, mapping and implementation. So I think all of those things have continued to show leadership.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. McJanet, you mentioned that the, the kind of role for coordinated project review hasn't really been able to be upheld. When was the last time, do you know, when like a project would have been referred to CERC for joint review?
I will also call to Counselor Anderson because of Counselor Anderson's involvement. I will say firstly, though, that the Estuary Review Committee ceased, sort of became defunct many years before the Estuary Management Committee ceased to meet. The district continued to share major project referrals outside of the Estuary Review, the formal Estuary Review Committee with the SEMC table. So that continued, you know, from my, where I started to participate around 2015 to 2019. But the formality of those referrals, you know, started to erode, I guess, with participation. Counselor Anderson, you may be able to help out there.
As a matter of fact, I did look up the date of the announcement by Fisheries and Oceans Canada, and their representative on both the CERC and the SEMC was Mr. Brian Nato, was 2014. And it may have been things going on in Ottawa at that time, but there were changes within that department that led them to take the lead in abandoning that coordinated project review. Now, the Fisheries Act is a very powerful tool, and in fact, they felt that they can fall back on the mechanism of Fisheries Act to carry on their ongoing project review work. So 2014 was the last meeting of CERC. And following that, there were project review referrals to SEMC, not least from the district. However, SEMC was never set up to be a technical review body. Our environment coordinator, and there's been a few persons filling that position over the years, was our technical review representative on CERC, and was also plan coordinator. And if we read through the 1999 Plan, that was intentional in that the plan coordinator had that technical background to operate on both committees. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarity. But, and then just to confirm that there is still inter-jurisdictional referrals that happen when there are projects that come forward. That's correct?
That's correct, yes.
Further questions, counsel? Counselor Penneygo.
Yeah, Ms. McJanet, you mentioned that we and some other senior levels of government were signatories to this plan. Does there need to be, or has there been a formal sort of dissolution of the plan? Or is it because, you know, this was something originally required by those regulatory bodies that are no longer interested themselves, we're just confident that there's really no reason to worry about it? Or like, do we have to do something to officially, or is that what actually this letter then accomplishes? Or is there any sort of legislative reason why or step we have to take?
Thank you for the question. Through to council, the letter is highlighting the district's role and participation within the SEMC table. It's not calling on the rest of the members to dissolve SEMC in any way. Certainly, we can only speak for our own role as a, as a signatory to the plan. There has been no, no indication from, from other members around the, from other levels of government that there's some intention of pulling back. You know, essentially, the plan remains as a historic document. And we do have in writing one of the, one of the actions that the committee table asked the district as chair, I think, if memory recalls, I think it was around 20, probably 2014, thereabouts, where we reached out to those other levels of government to get confirmation of the status of their participation. So we do have correspondence from DFO, as Counselor Anderson pointed out, where they have stepped back and highlighted that their, their participation was limited by resources and that they would no longer be participating.
Yeah, just to follow up, though. So, you know, my, from the report, a lot of the sort of components of the Estuary Management Plan have been moved into our OCP. But are we still then beholden to this Estuary Management Plan? Or as values and priorities and so on have shifted, do we feel free to go beyond or sort of change elements? Like, is this plan, you know, what makes it strictly a historical thing, which, when I hear that, I hear that we don't really have to pay, like, it's the OCP, which is the, the plan, the official sort of legislative requirements now. Can you just speak to, like, is there something we need to do to sort of feel that we don't have to worry? I don't want to be, you know, that we don't, like, are we still beholden to the Estuary Management Plan? And our OCP has to stay within that? Or have we sort of officially transitioned into the OCP as the sole regulatory tool with regards to these matters?
Through to council, when we did the OCP update and we looked closely at the SEMP Plan, we acknowledged and recognized that the SEMP document was not sort of regulatory and having teeth for the District of Squamish. And so it was really important for us to ensure that major area designations and, and guiding policy were embedded in our community plan at the policy level. And then also, there were further zoning updates as well that basically embedded those area designations through not only the OCP Schedule B land use, but also through zoning. A good example of that is the Conservation Area, the WMA. So that was, we ensured that there was aligned official community plan, land use, land and water use designation that aligned with that WMA creation. And then subsequently, we also adjusted the zoning to ensure that conservation zoning was applied. So that's an example of how those really important components of the SEMP Plan were translated and embedded in our policy and our zoning regulation. We continue to reference the SEMP Plan all the time, not only the SEMP Plan, but also the WMA Management Plan. Those are really important documents that live on and are consistently referenced. A lot of the important projects and initiatives in the SEMP Plan have been accomplished. So we were able to see a lot of the things that were outlined in the SEMP Plan, those were, those were accomplished over time, which was great. Some of the ongoing reporting and things like that, and a repository of information, we will probably need to do a better job of ensuring that those are, remain available and archived. So that's one other piece that we've been thinking about.
Further questions, counsel? Mayor Hurford.
Thank you. My question is about the sort of the going forward piece. And in an earlier, like last time we discussed this, or the meeting that resulted in the motions we're discussing today, there's a recommendation that the District of Squamish establish working groups to advise on marine estuary-related planning on as-needed project basis, coupled with associated resourcing in lieu of the creation of a standing marine coordination body, which I think is what we're discussing here. It makes me think that some of the projects that need to happen don't necessarily have that champion. And something I was thinking a group could do is be that champion. I'm thinking dredging comes to mind as something that we need, it's going to take sustained effort over time to figure out a plan. And that project itself is in such a long form, unfortunately, as much as it couldn't be, couldn't maybe should be simpler. To me, something that sort of lives that long is, sort of becomes some sort of advisory body or group to go to, and there could be work happening there. So if that, the recommendations, I understand that piece. Can you speak to that, that sort of going forward piece? Maybe dredging is, is a good example. Maybe you have another one. Like, how do we reconcile that? Because a working group on that specific topic could exist for a long period of time till it's ever realized. And how different is that from a committee or working group or advisory group of some sorts more broadly in, in the marine space?
Through to council, it's a great, it's a conundrum. I think in terms of building relationship over time, and all of the variety of interests in the community, that takes sustained effort. Whether that happens in a committee format or is more focused, has been the question that we've been grappling with. And I think, based on sort of the struggles with, with SEMC, And I think based on sort of the struggles with, with SEMC in its final days or years and the, the variety of interests and the mandates and under the former plan, we were looking to basically explore alternatives. But, and so we had thought through the Marine Action Strategy that a SEMC-like replacement standing group might be a good way to go about that. But there are so many parties at the table. And depending on what you're talking about, a more focused and targeted approach through project-specific engagement where we can do, and, and through our engagement program, we've been through IEP2, you do a lot of mapping, like who's, who are, who is impacted by these, by the project or the initiative? What are the elements and who needs to be at the table? And there's, it's very nuanced and so that we can be a little bit, we can be a lot more targeted and specific with the engagement. But I have to say, you know, there's a lot of the same engagement that's happening with these organizations because they're, they're purview and mandate and they're so well-established. So we're often engaging the same people, but it does still allow for a bit more targeted approach by doing project-specific engagement. But it does take sustained commitment. It takes also ensuring that we have adequate budget incorporated into these project budgets and that there's an adequate timeline for that engagement. We've seen engagement overall slow down, like it, groups and organizations largely volunteer-based. There's so many things happening right now, they're fully saturated, and we want to be respectful of their time as well. So holding these kind of long, like these committees that meet is, it takes a lot to administer those, lift them up, but also that requires a lot of the community and they have limited capacity as well. So we wanted to explore the focused approach.
Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful. Do you, is there a scenario where we, this letter gets written, motions pass it as presented, and the historic members want to proceed? And then we need to have, answer the question about district participation? If that, like, is that a scenario? I understand that we've, we've heard that senior governments have stepped away or regulators have stepped away. I'm going to assume it's very unlikely they're going to come, they're, they're interested in coming back, which is your, your assessment roughly? What does that look like? What are their bylaws around, are there bylaws of this group? Like, is that something that could happen? And then we're, we need to come back and have a discussion whether we are involved in this group, whatever the format it takes?
Thank you for the question. In, in a scenario where another organization or entity kind of either revived SEMC or there was another group, we would absolutely bring that back to council for further discussion around participation. Definitely have an open mind and, and we have a very, we've prioritized doing good engagement in community and building relationship. It's in our strategic plan, it's in our OCP, and we're very committed to that. In the same token, as an example, I was just speaking with the, the chamber and Tourism Squamish about a month ago, and they were, they have a subcommittee and they're very engaged on marine items. They wanted to know what the update was. So, you know, staff provided an update, offered to come to their board meeting and provide an update as well. So we're very open to engaging with others on, on their terms as part of their boards and, and through initiatives and engagement. So it's a two-way kind of reciprocal approach, I guess.
Okay, thank you for that.
Other questions, council? We have a staff recommendation, excuse me, before us, and it has three elements. And I wonder whether, Ms. McJanet, whether we may be able to put that recommendation up on the screen. I wish to test with council an alternate recommendation. And I've asked Ms. McJanet to put it up on the screen. There are three elements here, and the element that I wish to suggest alternative approaches to is the bullet number two. And I have circulated a copy of that resolution, and I can just briefly highlight it and then ask if there may be a seconder. And I can proceed to outline some background information as briefly as I can. So I propose in an alternate recommendation from this committee to council that item bullet number one be retained and that bullet number three be retained, with the exception of the phrasing "Squamish Estuary Management Committee replacement", for the reason that the Squamish Estuary Management Committee is not a district committee and SEMP is not a district plan. So we would be overstepping our jurisdiction to propose a replacement. Some other phrasing would be more appropriate and less misleading. As for the bullet number two, I proposed to, to insert a clause, a number three, but number two. And I'll read them out as follows and then ask if there may be a seconder. My bullet number two is direct the mayor to send a letter to representatives of the historic members of the Squamish Estuary Management Committee as listed in its 2011 Terms of Reference with the addition of new 2018 member Squamish River Watershed Society. It's important, I think, that we be clear on who are the members, and so I've inserted that for the best clarification that I think we can come up with. Convening a meeting for the purpose of reviewing new and replacement sector or organization representatives, it has after all been five years, and other committee business as may arise, and advising that the District of Squamish will not continue in a role as committee chair, and therefore, a new chair should be appointed. What is different there is that the task recommendation, staff recommendation is stronger language. My inserted number three is as follows: Refer the matter of resourcing a potential continued district role as SEMP plan coordinator, providing administrative support to the Estuary Management Committee to the next year, next five-year financial plan deliberations. I hope that is clear as I presented it, and I would then ask if there may be a seconder for that recommendation. Councillor French, are you seconding the motion?
No, I would like for these three elements to be separated out so that we're dealing with each one individually. I think that each merits individual consideration. So that being the case, I will second the first, the number one, to receive the background documents.
Then the motion that I will put forward is that we, is that we adopt the first item in the staff recommendation number one, and councillor French seconds that recommendation. Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question on adopting element number one of the staff recommendation: receiving background documents, respecting the Squamish Estuary Management Plan and Estuary Management Committee discussed, and the other, as attached, attachments three to seven. Any discussion? I would like to comment that, that this, this is important, that this has been collected and presented for the public record, simply because it's an extraordinary body of work, not least reflecting the efforts of our planner, Sir McJanet. This body of work will be very useful for any outcome and also for whatever organizational outcomes there may be regarding our marine sector. So it is on the public record and for future reference and use. I'll call the question then on adopting element number one of the staff recommendation. All in favor? Thank you. Carried. Councillor French, I take it you'd like to proceed to the last one then? I've labeled it number four, but it's the number, the last bullet in the staff recommendation. It is to direct staff not to proceed with the creation of a standing marine coordinating body at this time. Now, I've read that without the clause of the replacement. Perhaps councillor French, I will leave it to you to make the motion, and is that, is that okay with you? Or we have, we have our staff wishes to jump in here.
Hi, looking at the procedure bylaw, it would be better to consider them in order. If you want to consider them out of order, council should have considered a motion to separate and specify the order before voting on the first recommendation. So just point of order around that and how you proceed.
Would staff then be recommending a motion to consider the procedure of going through these? We've already passed a motion on element number one, is that? That we, that we go out in a new order?
That would, that would, that would provide clarification if council considered a motion to consider the third bullet point next, and then you could leave the second bullet point till the end. Does that, does that make sense?
I will test a motion on that. That we consider bullet point three in the staff recommendation prior to proceeding with consideration of the other elements. If there's a seconder? Thank you. Councillor Stoner seconds. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you. Carried. Now, we'll proceed then to that third bullet. And I'm, I have suggested that the replacement is, is, is really out of order because of jurisdictional issues. But I'll then recommend an amended wording for that, and that will be to, that I move that we, we adopt the bullet as follows, that to staff, direct, direct staff not to proceed with the creation of a standing marine coordinating body at this time. Is there a seconder? Mayor Hurford, any discussion, questions? Councillor Stoner?
Yeah, I will speak to this, because I think that this is an important piece, both the presentation I heard and then some of the comments and questions that I heard from my council colleagues, is how do we move this forward if this particular body doesn't exist? And I've heard from community, there's a lot of interest in terms of continued engagement. And I just want to reiterate staff's comments around our commitment as a body to show up and engage on project-specific items. It's not that we are not engaging anymore just because this working group doesn't exist. It's that we are upholding a different level of engagement on project-specific items as they see fit. And if the times change, if the need changes, and a more fulsome, integrated conversation is required at a future date, I think there's openness to evaluating that. But I think that this is a much more functional way to go forward at this time. And so I just want to recognize that this isn't us stepping away from engagement, that we're not going to have conversations on marine coordination or marine-specific topics with community. The actual opposite is true. We're going to be much more targeted and focused in how we have those conversations going forward. Thanks.
Councillor Pedding?
Yeah, I will support this as well. I think, and much for the same reasons as my colleague, for me, you know, when I try and step back a bit, this area is critically important, the estuary, but in my mind, so is every piece of Squamish. And I've had a hard time sort of wondering why this area has a special committee and not the other areas. And so there's some appeal to me to dealing with this sort of holistically within the OCP with really good engagement and in consideration of all the balances and all the groups. And so as a starting point, sort of taking a deep breath, stepping back and making sure we're looking at the big picture, including all the perspectives, this makes sense to me. And do we, you know, it may become apparent that actually, no, there is some rationale for doing something specific with specific groups, and happy to sort of entertain that in a, in a future discussion. But for right now, I, I think this, this makes sense to me. Thank you.
Before I go to Mayor Hurford, I wondered if I could ask councillor Peddingill for clarity on this particular item is, is relating to a recommendation of the marine action strategy to strike a marine coordinating body. And it doesn't relate to the Squamish Estuary Management Plan or Management Committee. So I just wondered, I just wanted to make that clear, that this proposed clause number three there. The issue is, we've got a stubborn issue, is that the Estuary Management Committee can't be replaced by us, because it's not our committee. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the intent of the standing marine coordinator, that is recognition coming from marine action strategy. Maybe then I'll proceed to Mayor, Mayor Hurford.
Thank you. Of all the recommendations, I had a hardest time wrapping my head around this particular one. But the response from, that I've heard in this, in this meeting were satisfactory to me, where, and I'm going to paraph, I'm going to paraphrase or give my perspective on this. Really, what this bullet point gets at is what mechanism we're going to use to engage in a meaningful way with the, with the community, not whether we are going to engage with the community in a meaningful way. So I'm, I appreciate that, that little piece of nuance is enough for me just to, to support this. And as we are in the, in this new era, I think it's of, of how issues are, are addressed and how we work, how we work through them. I think it's really important that we keep our eye on, on outcomes and, and make sure that we're getting the outcome that, that we need. As with many things, we, sometimes we get caught up in the, we'll agree on the desired outcome and get tripped up with disagreements around the mechanism to achieve that. So as long as this gets us there, and I feel that with the complexity and the, and respecting everyone's, all interested parties' time and, and capacity, including all the apartments inside this building, I think it's really important that we, that we support this, this direction and, and while continue to advance work on, on, on estuary-related issues. So thank you very much for that, and I'll be supporting.
Further comments? I'll offer my own view on this particular clause. I will be supporting the, this recommendation. For the one reason is that we must be recognizing the pressures on our staff and their workload. And I therefore am sympathetic to giving some leeway, some ability for staff to determine when we're, time is appropriate to strike such a standing marine coordinating body. And I gather that simply the workload on our staff is such that this is not, not timely for that. Secondly, and this relates to the jurisdiction of the Estuary Management Plan and the Estuary Management Committee. The Estuary Management Plan and the committee both address the east side of the estuary, which is the Macklinchlin Channel. It does not extend as far as Darrell Bay or Watts Point or Wood Fiber. But the Estuary Management Plan covers all of the east portion of the estuary, which is the Macklinchlin Channel, former east branch of the river. And there is a precedent elsewhere for an estuary plan jurisdiction to be expanded, namely the Fraser River Estuary Plan. And they expanded to include Burrard Inlet. And that might be something to consult in future, but it is for the future and not something we're going to decide today. But just to clarify that, the Estuary Management Plan covers the entire delta area, mountain face to mountain face. So I will then support this recommendation. Are we ready to call the question? I'll call the question then on the motion to adopt clause number three in the staff recommendation. And do we have a seconder? I'm not sure if we do. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mayor, Mayor Hurford seconds. Staff wanting to jump in?
I was just making sure I was following along correctly, but you're just voting on number, clause three, correct?
As written in the staff report?
I have a question, is that the staff recommendation includes the phrasing "Squamish Estuary Management Committee replacement", which I find to be inappropriate?
So councillor Anderson made the motion that didn't include the definition in brackets, which I seconded. That's my understanding of where we are.
Thank you, Mayor Hurford. Then we're ready to call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Any opposed? Carried.
Just before we move to the next item for consideration, I did have a question of clarification for staff, if I may, through the chair. I think I heard you say, Ms. McJanet, that if another entity were to pick up Squamish Estuary Management Committee and act as chair, that we would maybe consider participating? The language in the letter is quite strong, and the language in the motion is quite strong that we would no longer participate. I'm just curious if we will, if there's any, if there was an intent to entirely close that door, or if there's any good reason to keep that door slightly ajar if somebody else were to pick up the chair and coordination piece?
Sorry, excuse me. Through the chair, as written in the letter, we were really clear about the staff capacity constraints. So with the, paired with stepping down as chair, the letter was communicating limited capacity to participate. Should it go forward? If council would like us to re-review that opportunity, should it arise, then staff would be looking for maybe some input and amendment around that letter in the way that it's been framed. So we would want to address that today if the direction of council is to direct staff to return to council for discussion. Should that committee continue under our chair?
Thank you. Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, question of clarification, which I hope I'm not falling into a hole of semantics. But I've heard, you know, that the SEMC committee is not our committee. I've also heard it referenced as a standing committee, and a standing committee is a sort of an official thing created by the mayor. Is this a different standing or that term, you know, there's, it's not that kind of standing committee, like this is completely separate from that?
Through to council, the clarification, we've been, I apologize for any misunderstanding, but the standing committee item has always been referring to the district-supported alternate working group or committee as identified in the Marine Action Strategy. So they're very distinct. Standing committee refers to a municipal-supported committee, like a municipal standing committee, not the SEMC.
Thank you, Ms. McJanet. If there are no other questions or comments at this point, I would like to propose an alternate recommendation to the second bullet in the staff suite of recommendations, and it will be as follows. Direct the mayor to send a letter to representatives of the historic members of the Squamish Estuary Management Committee as listed in its 2011 Terms of Reference with the addition of new 2018 member, Squamish River Watershed Society, convening a meeting for the purpose of reviewing new and replacement sector or organization representatives and other committee as may arise, and advising that the District of Squamish will not continue in a role as committee chair, and therefore, a new chair should be appointed. If there's a seconder, I can speak to that. Counselor French seconds?
I have four reasons for bringing this alternate motion forward. Firstly, recently, a number of organizations who, with the district participating, if that should occur, would represent a quorum for a SEMC meeting. They have declared interest in such a meeting. The district, as current committee chair, can convene this meeting, which has been suggested by council itself early last year. Secondly, it is suggested that, quote, "a letter substantiating the form attached to the January 2014-2025 Report to Council as Attachment One," in the original clause, be removed. I suggest that be removed as it is largely redundant if my, if this motion is adopted, and it does require substantial editing for accuracy. A brief memo citing this recommended council resolution, the one I propose, if passed, should suffice. Thirdly, it is suggested that, quote, "will no longer be participating in SEMC," unquote, be removed as its purposes and implications are unclear. As plan coordinator, the district hosts the SEP Library and is an important advisory resource and stakeholder with land use planning and zoning jurisdiction, First Nations reconciliation objectives, and ongoing diverse programs and project interests within the SEP planning area, which includes the Macklinch Line Channel. These roles and responsibilities are arguably greater than those involved in other initiatives and organizations in which the district is an ongoing active participant, such as the Houson Biosphere Region Initiative Society and Marine Stewardship Initiative, and I believe Ms. Janet, Ms. McJanet has mentioned a couple of others. In addition, according to SEP 1999, Section 4.3, "Proposed district land use designation and zoning changes within the SEP area are to be referred to SEMC for review. Land use plan review is the intended core function of SEMC." We've slipped on this. There's a number of zoning changes and other land use planning changes that have made that have not been referred to SEMC, which SEMC members have raised as an issue. Finally, it is also suggested that, quote, "will no longer be resourcing future Squamish Estuary Management Committee activities," unquote, be removed. Firstly, the district accepted the role of plan coordinator in 1999, and abandoning this position is a matter which should be addressed with the other five SEMC signatories, and they include the Squamish Nation, and SEMC members. While it is possible other alternate sources for, sources of funding for SEMC activities may be identified in future, and this has been suggested, this is as yet uncertain. Ms. McJanet has mentioned the interest recently declared, in fact, ongoing from Squamish Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Squamish. There is some potential for some kind of administrative or other support. It's also been suggested that industry, as well as Squamish River Watershed Society and their contacts, should be providing various kinds of support. But this is all uncertain at this time. So this, I suggest that some of these, these four elements be removed in the present clause. I finally will just comment that one of the persistent problems is the reality that if the district takes on the role as chair and has the responsibility under the Estuary Management Plan to refer projects and land use plan changes, then you're in a, we're in a conflict of interest if we don't convene meetings and if we don't make those referrals. And those referrals would be directed through the chair, which is us. So this avoiding this situation of conflict of interest is one of the, one of the things I think we should attend to. If there's, we have a seconder, so discussion and questions?
Counselor, Mayor Hurford?
Thank you. I think when I read the original staff recommendation here, it refers to the letter and using that letter, I'm supportive of the direction outlined in the in the letter, where to me, if we step down as the, as the chair, which we've, I think our other decisions today sort of support that, then it's to the group to understand and to advance that work and figure out what the next stage, if there is anything, with SEMC. I asked that question earlier, what happens, we step down, but SEMC as a group figures out how to, how to, how to move forward and what do we do, what do we do there? And I'm happier with the, I'm not supportive of this motion. The staff recommendation is what I see as the path, as a path forward, and none of these things are final, final state. If this organization, if these folks want to continue to work in this, in that form, then we can have a future discussion about whether we want to participate and to what level at that time. But I don't think that a motion that is requesting anything to happen from the group, and we've heard about some complexities, what actually calling a meeting, that's why the recommendation has been to write a letter. So I'm not supportive of this direction at this time. Won't be supporting the motion.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. I tend to be more supportive of this staff recommendation at this time. And I think for me, you know, the, the plan, the Estuary Management Plan has some critical work behind it. The committee did important work, but as I understand it, this was made sort of regulatory through its incorporation into our OCP. And so we are protecting, I feel, the work done and the values sort of identified through our OCP. And I think at this point, there's been a lot of change since 1999, and I think how we move forward and moving forward within an OCP framework, and I put a bit of an asterisk beside that, makes sense. And one of the things, you know, when I look at the membership of the Estuary Management Committee and so on, and think where we've come in terms of reconciliation, Squamish Nation is a government, it is doing its own plan. And I think for me, going forward, any sort of planning committee around this, this topic needs to be in that context. And I sort of look forward to understanding what the Squamish Nation marine plan is and, and how that, how we can work together on our next OCP and how these things come together. I think, you know, if SEMC of some form comes together as an advocacy group representing certain members, I sort of wish this group, you know, you know, would be interested to hear what it has to say and so on. But I think where I am today, how such a group would be structured and what it would need to do to sort of be the sort of body that represents the whole of the plan, I think would need to look quite different to my mind. And so I think, again, the staff direction makes more sense to me at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. I also won't be supporting the alternate recommendation. I think the staff recommendation in this case is a more, is a clearer and more effective means to achieve our outcome here. In my mind, I think that it's, it's clear that the district should be stepping down as chair of this committee. Committees were a way that local government operated in the past. It no longer seems to be the primary or effective mechanism for managing and using community resources and support and collecting input. I think that one of the important pieces of the letter, in my mind, is the last sentence of the letter, which is, notwithstanding, "The district will continue to actively engage with the Squamish Nation, other government agencies, as well as community organizations and sector representatives in estuary restoration planning, resource and recreation management in line with community priorities and objectives." And I really hope to see a community organization grow out of what is the current SEMC group or the folks that are involved there, and so that we can move forward in a, in a relationship with another community organization that is in line with the way we operate with the rest of our community organizations. Thanks.
Mr. Velindiscus, I understand you've been seeking my attention if you wanted to contribute at this time. Please.
Thank you so much, and apologies for intervening, but I just wanted to give council information that the motion as proposed would most likely require additional resources because it's, it is continued representation of the district at this historical committee. Thank you.
Further comments? Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair. I won't be supporting the motion on the floor at this time. Well, I appreciate, I think, where Counselor Anderson is trying to go with it. And I think the piece for me here is ensuring that we're maintaining however we can the relationships with these organizations. How we move forward in relationship, I do agree that especially with the last sentence in the letter, really does reactivate our commitment to continued engagement, just not in this committee. And I think the cleanest way for us to remove ourselves from this committee is simply to send a letter to those existing partners that are on the committee. It's a difficult decision to make, but I think when three of the existing five signatories to the management plan have already stepped away, it's really hard to, to convene the right people to have a fulsome conversation about the future of this plan. The plan is really, really important, but even unto the plan itself, it had requirements in it to update it every five years, and it hasn't been updated since 1999. As Counselor Anderson has mentioned, it's not our plan to update, it's not our committee to manage. But we need to be clear about where, where our capacity is, where we are able to support if the federal government, if the provincial government comes back to the table in order to reinvigorate some of this. I think we can then be open to that conversation. But I think the motion as it's presented, or the motion that's on the table at the moment, actually further muddies the waters. And I think what we're trying to do is provide a clear direction to staff and to SEMC that we are stepping down as chair, that we are removing ourselves for the time being. And we may need to provide some further clarity if my council colleagues are amenable to putting the staff recommendation on the floor, to leaving the door open if somebody else resuscitates SEMC, that we would be open to coming to the table and having that conversation. But the motion as presented on the floor, I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. So I saw this motion as potentially a last chance for the community that is, has passion around the historic way that we have planned for and managed the estuary. I saw it as a potential last, last gasp and a more formal way to wrap things up if that's the direction that this was going to go with a larger community involved, as in larger than just this body. Possibly a way forward that isn't the project-by-project proposal that I think we're hearing from our staff. And I agree with Counselor Stoner. This is a very difficult decision that is made a little bit easier by the senior levels of government basically pulling out and seemingly leaving the District of Squamish with the responsibility of providing the leadership and also the funding, which I'm not supportive of as we look into the next two budget years and the potential increases that we might see in those budgets or are currently proposed. So I wanted to second this motion so that we would have this discussion, and I'm glad that we're having it. And I was not sure when I seconded this motion, which way I was going to go. I now found my, find myself in a position where I am confident that this is not the way that I wish to go. I won't be supporting the motion.
Further comments? Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add, and it's a slight tangent, but I think it's important. And just, we've had some reference to different committees, a standing marine coordinating body, the Estuary Management Committee, and references to staff capacity. And as a general principle, I'm not at a point where I think it's necessarily too costly to have a standing committee. I understand there are some staff resources required for that. I think in these particular cases, that's what my decision is speaking to. I just want to make it clear that I'm not making a statement in general about standing committees. I think in general, we should have that consideration door open. I just thought that was important to clarify.
Further comments? Then I'll offer some of my own. I will try to be brief. In response to some of the observations made or comments, the SEMC committee, in contrast to some assumption, has never been disbanded. And this is what our district senior staff have informed people who have written to us asking, requesting meetings, for example, Squamish River Watershed Society. And our staff has reaffirmed that we have not disbanded this committee. It has not been disbanded. So just to address that. The senior levels of government have affirmed a commitment to the Estuary Management Plan. The province and the Director General of Civic Region Fisheries and Oceans, they have not abandoned the plan. It is signed off by them with legislative orders in council. And this is pointed out, not least by Squamish Terminals, S.A. Marine Squamish, were involved in three other estuary management plans. They all have the same conditions and background. I agree with the issue of the offloading that's been pointed out, and we, then might prompt us to ask them, where do we go now? I'm going to comment on the letter because I find it problematic, and I will explain why. And I guess it's in the form of a question, what would we do with these elements of the letter? Firstly, SEMC is not project review. It is land use plan review, and that would need to be clarified. Secondly, I find that the presentation of SEMC's mandate is selective and not giving a clear picture. Also, the account of the achievements of SEMC is slightly inaccurate. These are elements of the plan itself. These are elements of the plan itself. And later, SEMC's key achievement was the devising of a management plan for the wildlife management area. Also related to that, the origins of the Estuary Management Plan, some clarification needs to be there, it was, and who paid for it. So there's some, just issues of, of historical accuracy there for the benefit of the recipients of a letter. The province has participated regularly through to the end of 2018, and it is only DFO and Environment Canada who declined to participate or did not turn up. And they weren't alone, there were Nature Trusts, for example, also since about 2015. The, the idea, the, the SEMC jurisdiction over, it does not have a jurisdiction over project review. The, the comment that SEMC is unable to fulfill its full mandate is inaccurate. That is simply a confusion between the mandates of the two respective entities, CIRK and The OCP section is missing section 14.6, and it also specifies roles of the Estuary Management Plan and for the Estuary Management Committee. That should be added to a letter. And finally, the Estuary Management Plan was costly and the, the arriving, the achievement of a wildlife area had costs, in particular for industry and transportation and also for the conservation sector represented by Squamish Environmental Conservation Society today is Squamish Environment Society, a huge stake in, in that process. And if we start to look at members of a new committee, we're going to overlook the stake that they have. And another footnote to that, it's a big footnote, is that Squamish Terminals and the Forest Industry have a regional and Western Canada stake in the Estuary Management Plan. And this has been pointed out vigorously by the Forest Industry and Squamish Terminals, especially 2015 during the oceanfront bylaw discussions. So that this is missing, it's not a community plan, it's in fact regional and beyond. And this is made clear in about paragraph two of the Estuary Management Plan. We are a regional, a Western Canada portal here, and they have stakeholders. The log handling working group has members from Pemberton and Mount Currie. The Forestry Association, which is not active now, but the working group is, it has members from Mount Currie and Pemberton, having a vital interest in the estuary and site B of the Estuary Management Plan. Finally, what do we do about the contact list? It's perhaps a technical matter, administrative ladder matter, but there's a number of corrections that need to be made to, to that list as it was presented in the package concerning forest industry and local commercial interests and the addition of the water, the Squamish River Watershed Society as examples. I, I'm concerned that in not recognizing the opportunity for a group of people, SEMC members, existing SEMC members, to come together and carry on their work, it reflects the idea that we have to do everything and that we have to have staff advisory committees. And I see this also, for example, in heritage management, instead of recognizing local community groups that want to take on work and go ahead and get things done, we hold them back because we think we need to direct it in a certain way in the form of a staff advisory committee. And I don't think this is necessary. And this relates to a goal or an objective in our strategic plan of recognizing the potential contributions of community groups. And the SEMC is one such avenue for those community groups to get things done, to devise solutions, recommend solutions without the active kind of oversight of, of the District of Squamish staff. I've spoken too much here, spoken too long, but I will ask if there are other comments at this time before we call the question on this recommendation. Hearing none. I'll call the question on my motion seconded by councillor French for an alternate bullet point number two, as I have distributed and read out. All in favor? Councillors Greenlaw and Anderson in favor? All opposed? Councillors Mayor Hurford, Councillors Hamilton, Stoner and Peddingill and French oppose. Motion fails. Councillor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. Before I put the, my next motion on the floor, I just have a, hopefully a quick clarifying question from staff. Oh, and the motion's no longer on the screen, that's okay. In the second bullet point of the staff, actually, would it be possible for staff, I think it'll help everybody, to put the motion back up? Okay, so on bullet point two, near the last, in the last part of that sentence, the District of Squamish will no longer be participating or resourcing future Squamish Estuary Management Committee activities. Can you clarify the, the meaning of participating in this context? My, my concern is that this motion might signal that we don't want anything to do with it versus we're just not going to take charge of it and, and be the resource source.
Through to council, the, the word participating, the intention behind that was participating by sending staff, essentially like staff involvement, attending the meeting beyond just the chair position.
So in this context, it doesn't mean that staff might not, you know, be engaged with a future potential committee, correct? It's, it, I, I mean, we're out on an ongoing as a member basis. I want to ensure that we don't signify that or signal that we, we want, we want to continue to engage, right? So I'm looking at that and I say, no longer be participating in. And then the, the last sentence of the letter seemed to be, what's the difference between engaging with and participating in? Maybe that's the clarification I'm seeking.
Thank you. One, just understanding kind of your note about seeking clarity and, and the signal to the rest of the committee, one suggestion is to decouple that last sentence and basically remove no longer participating or resourcing, so we could just step back as chair and then allow for some, you know, if, if the committee continues, there's movement around that and there's an invitation to all of the groups and beyond to participate, then that could be considered on its merit. We would be bringing that back to council for discussion and direction, but for the time being, we could also remove that last sentence from the motion.
If I could just clarify, what is important in this motion from a resourcing perspective is that letter, that's attachment one. And really after that, the motion could stop just about anywhere.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you. Just as, I appreciate that extra language here as far as explaining to folks that are only looking at our resolutions, not, or at the, the, the motion, not at the letter itself. So I think that if we were to, I, I appreciate the suggestion and my suggestion had that, that language just crossed out because really we're talking about the letter. And when I read the letter, I think it actually represents where we're, where we're at. So just, I don't know if this is a comment, just sort of like a going forward piece, rather than speaking about what the letter, what any letter or attachment that we refer to in a motion aims to achieve. If we're going to talk about the letter, let's talk about the, the letter. So I, I think I can move that, I'll move the staff recommendation ending at, report to, as attachment one to the historic members of Squamish Estuary Committee, stop. And then we can, and if there's a seconder, then I'll, I'll speak to it. And then we're looking at the letter itself.
Are you seconding that motion, Councillor Hamilton? Very good. Discussion on that motion?
Yeah, just briefly, I, I appreciate, I know we've, we've discussed sort of a couple paths here, so some of it's been, been said. I appreciate the, this is a, this letter is, I think does a good job of trying to paint some background. So it, this isn't exclusively, the audience for this isn't exclusively the, the former members, but would be well versed in, in the nuances of, of this, but gives a, a general outline of what has transpired to, to date. To me, the, the most important piece of this is, is the, is the one sentence, "The district will not be revisiting or resourcing efforts to act as chair nor revive SEMC." That's the, that's the short version. And then whatever happens, whatever the group decides to do from there is, if, if anything, it leaves, I think that leaves doors open. And it, there is also a, a big piece of this talking about how we are going forward to, to actively engage with Squamish Nation, other government agencies, as well as community organizations and sector representatives in estuary restoration planning, resource and recreation management in line with community priorities and objectives. And I think my only commentate, the only piece I would add, I'm not proposing to add to the letter, but just in, in my comments, is that flows from OCP and, and strategic plan, which is where SEMC's fit, and that work is Estuary Management work has sort of fed, fed into. So I think this represents our position well today and gives, and gives SEMC the, the clarity of our, of our participation at this time. And, and then whatever the next looks like, isn't really spoken to here as much because it gets into that speculative piece. It's just about what, where we are today and how we intend to go forward. So I'm supportive of this, of this direction and, and I'm happy to be having the discussion today to get this sort of on solid ground as to how we intend to, to proceed and, and we can move forward. So, thank you.
Further comments? Councillor French?
Thanks, Chair. I will be supporting the motion. I appreciate that it, it does keep the door, as councillor Stoner has coined, somewhat ajar, if there is an appetite to, to revisit all of this. I have significant concerns around budget. I don't think we have the money to do CPR on, on this committee and this plan. If someone else decides that they've got the budget and they want to fund it, because we're keeping the door ajar, it's clear we could, we could be there to support whatever life support might come forward. And I'm, I'm hoping that when it gets to the point of sharpening up the wording, the actual wording of this letter, that Mayor Hurford, you might work with councillor Anderson to address some of his thoughts on potential edits to the wording.
The comments, Councillor Peddingill?
Yeah, I will support this. And I, I, I think I understand what my colleague was, was trying to get at. I would just sort of say respectfully that I think the, the plan is now enshrined legislatively in the OCP. And so I don't think that the plan is, is on CPR, needing CPR. And, and I think the division is that within our framework of engagement around the OCP and per project engagement and so on, that there will be significant investment ongoing in consultation and engagement on the sort of important, many important issues here. And so it's just, it is more about the mechanism by which we are moving forward as opposed to abandoning this. This work is still happening, just in a, in a different way.
For clarity, Mayor Hurford, I'm sure that our staff have recorded your motion, but for my clarity, you're stopping at which point in point two there and leaving out a part of the raising?
Right at the end of Estuary Management Committee, period. So I leave out advising the District of Squamish because that's, we're really talking about the letter, so we don't need that. The rationale is we don't need that, that piece is redundant, given that we're talking about a specific attachment and letter.
Thank you. I'm happy to support this motion. I am concerned, however, that with respect to resourcing, it may not be a great deal of challenge to resource committee meetings. I attended the, in 1980's meetings of the Estuary Plan Public Involvement Working Group. They were held in a room at the library without a facilitator. And it seems to me as a community, why can't we accomplish business in that, in that mode any longer? We have a lot of the community resource, resourceful people in organizational development and, and management, and it disappoints me that this is such a hurdle. Also, as a former member of the Smokeless Park Advisory Committee, a council appointee, I was there in a, in a ex officio, we had four staff persons and a councillor attending those meetings for an area that consists of 20 hectares, whereas the Estuary Management Plan area consists of 1,000 hectares nearly and all sorts of complexity. So this is something that I, of course, would, is, is a curious fact to me, that our relative priorities seem to be a little bit hard to understand sometimes. I will then call the question. I am pleased to note the, the comments regarding amendment to the letter. I'm happy to contribute where I can with contact networks and so forth and the amendment to the district's recommendation. So I will call the question then. All in favor? And that is unanimous, I believe? Yes, thank you very much. And thank you to staff. Councillor?
Motion to close, or motion to terminate, sorry.
A seconder, Mayor Hurford? Any, any discussion? All in favor? None opposed? Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for your patience and indulgence.